We are live.
Board of Education Meeting, April 29, 7 o'clock. John, take attendance. I guess I got unmuted. Call the Board of Education Meeting, April 29, 7 o'clock. John, take attendance.
We are currently, oh, there's Jennifer. Uh, we are currently missing Howard.
Howard's here. He just is not logged in. He just is not logged in.
Okay. All right, I don't see him.
Hello.
That's okay. The joy is behind the meeting.
All board members are present. I see Howard now.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is public comment. Let me see in the chat. Dave, if you could just let me know who's next on public comment. Okay, Allison. Allison Webster.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thanks. Good evening, my name is Allison Webster and I'm a Bloomfield School District parent. I'm joined tonight by Andrea London and Jenny Myers, both from International Cultural Exchange Services. Thank you to the Board for allowing me the opportunity to bring before you a matter that is very important to our family. In December 2019, I heard about a foreign exchange student who was having difficulty finding a placement due to his biliac disease and dairy intolerance. It caught my attention not only because I've always been interested in hosting an FES, but because I also have biliac disease and am dairy intolerant, have a huge love for traveling, and understand how difficult it is to safely travel. I became very excited about providing this opportunity for him and ensuring his mother and family that he would be safe and healthy. Shortly after being accepted as a host family, we began to build a relationship with Ivan and his family. We anticipated that he would be joining us in August of 2020 and spending the current school year with us. He was accepted into the BHHS FES program and we are very excited for his arrival. My daughter's connected with Ivan through social media and I text with Ivan and his family regularly. Of course, COVID happened and Ivan was not able to join us in August as anticipated, so we promised Ivan that we would hold a spot for him in our family until the following year, and this helps give him relief with the overall situation. During this time, we have continued to build a friendship and relationship with Ivan and his family in anticipation of his joining us in August 2021. Our excitement and anticipation of him finally arriving in August 2021 has grown greater with each passing month. Recently, I've been notified that the school will not be accepting foreign exchange students for the 21-22 school year. While I am unaware of the Board's reasoning for this decision, I believe there are always special circumstances in every situation, and this one warrants one. Denying Ivan access to the school will deny him the ability to fulfill the dream he's had for many years. Students start the FES process years before they are eligible, they work hard to maintain their grades, avoid behavior problems, and have to be proven out before they are accepted into the program. Denying Ivan access denies our family the ability to have the experience that we have been anticipating for almost 18 months now, the opportunity for the relationship that we had built with him to take forth in fully form, and opportunity that will no doubt change each of our lives. The possibility of Ivan not being able to join us in August never crossed my mind. This has been devastating news, not only to Ivan but to our family. The 21-22 school year is an especially exciting one for us, as all three of my children will be in the high school together, a freshman, junior, and senior, which they're excited about, and made all the more exciting the fact that Ivan would be with them too. Over the last 18 months, Ivan has spent time studying and learning about Michigan and the Bloomfield School District. He is so excited to come to the USA and join his American family and attend school with his American sisters. He is excited about this opportunity to change, that will change his life and his future. In Ivan's words, "I don't want to waste my teenage years," and I think that we can be responsible with the virus and do the things we like at the same time. You must adapt to situations, learn to manage them. The best thing to do in Bloomfield Hills is going to be a great effort for me, but I'll do my best to make my dream of study in the USA come true, learn about your culture, your language, and experience the American education. The world is always changing, and youth adapts to it. I ask the Board to please consider the special circumstance and allow Ivan to attend school with his American sisters this fall. I appreciate your time and attention to this very important matter.
Thank you, Allison. Next is Erin Williams.
Hi, are you guys able to see, hear me?
Yes.
And Lena?
Yes, we can.
I'm here. Good evening, my name is Erin Williams and I'm a junior at the International Academy. I can't hear Lena. But Lena and I are both members of the Board Intern Advisory Council, and tonight we are speaking on their behalf. We are in favor of delayed school start times, having high schools starting at 7:55 a.m. As students who participate in several extracurricular activities and have after-school jobs, we believe that the start time would be a happy medium for the high school students. It allows us to get much-needed sleep without interfering with those after-school activities. Not only do we believe this plan is best for high school students, but we also believe it has the most positive impact on middle and elementary school students because it allows their day to start a bit later without making major changes to their traditional schedules.
Our delayed school start time this year has proven to be extremely beneficial. We have ample time to sleep in, eat breakfast, and even get ready for our day. We would love to see this extended into our school year next year.
And if we made 7:55 the start time for high school next year, our students would be able to continue these practices and the benefits, or reap the benefits that come from them. At IA, we start school at 7:45 each day, and though this isn't 7:55 exactly, I can just say that starting school closer to 8 a.m. than to 7 a.m. has helped us a lot because it's easier to get the proper amount of sleep with enough time to partake in extracurriculars without cutting time, cutting into the time it takes to complete our assignment.
We thank you for providing us the time to speak on behalf of the Advisory Council, and we hope you consider our points during your voting process today. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena. Thanks, Erin. Next is Henry Jackson.
Hi, everyone. I'm Henry Jackson, a sophomore at Bloomfield Hills High School, and I'd like to take a few minutes to share my opinion on high school start times. One of the most widespread and consequential, yet solvable, problems teenagers face is lack of sleep. Lack of sleep can lead to depression, obesity, alcohol and drug consumption, and poor academic performance, among other things. The primary cause of the sleep deprivation is the extremely early start times that high schoolers have had to endure. While a 7:55 a.m. start would be better than a 7:25 a.m. start, in my opinion, it isn't sufficient. The CDC, as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Medical Association, have recommended middle school and high school students start the day no earlier than 8:30 a.m. In my experience, though, starting at 9:35 is even more effective than the bare minimum of 8:30, because since the change, students in class seem more attentive and in a more positive mood and more likely to enjoy learning. Numerous studies throughout the United States spec up this argument. When Jackson Hole High School in Wyoming shifted its start time to 8:55, the number of car crashes involving teenage drivers dropped by 70%. Switching middle school start times by 30 minutes or more to after 8 a.m. in Wake County, North Carolina was associated with increased math and reading test scores, with disadvantaged students benefiting the most. And lastly, a report published by the Brookings Institution associated a significant increase in test scores with later middle and high school start times, with benefits roughly twice as great in disadvantaged students. Despite the overwhelming amount of research against early start times, the American, the average American public school start time is 8:03 a.m. We've had great success in the last few months, beginning the day at 9:35 with an optional Black Hawk hour before, and I hope that the Board votes to keep the current schedule, roughly speaking, moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Henry. Next person is Natalie. Natalie, if you're on the phone, was it star six to undelete, to unmute? Okay, we'll go next to Julie.
Hi, my name is Julie Odo and I'm a parent of a sophomore at Bloomfield Hills High School. First, I have to say that the young women, young women who spoke before Henry and Henry were way more prepared and articulate than I am or will be tonight, but I still felt it was important for me to speak related to start times very quickly. I also appreciate the young women who spoke before Henry willing to be, to do a compromise. We understand that in our world, compromises are part of our everyday lives, whether it's in work or at home. However, this is an issue right now that I don't think that we need, number one, need to compromise or be, should really be compromising on. The half an hour or so of moving from the current start time to 7:55 is sort of like having a student potentially turn in a paper that was supposed to be 500 words minimum at 450 words. We wouldn't, a teacher wouldn't accept that, and I don't think that we should be accepting this, this partial compromise at this point. The research is strong enough, the data is strong enough, and sort of defaulting to this, it's a transportation or busing issue, in my opinion, is really sort of a cop-out. And I think we can do better than that. I don't know that we've seen a thorough transportation report. Are there ways to be more creative, combine elementary and middle school students, do two drop-offs? I've heard other districts have done that. Some districts don't even have busing anymore. So I understand, you know, adding buses is not an option, it would cost millions of dollars, but, but I think we can do way better than a 7:55 start time. I also think that while there has been some discussion about this within, with the Board, I don't think enough due diligence related to truly trying to make a difference here has, has happened yet, and that rushing a vote tonight would be a really unnecessary compromise. And I think that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Julie. Karen? Karen Benjamin?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Yep.
Okay. Thank you for taking my comment. I'm also wanting to speak to the Board about the vote on delayed start plan from high school. I feel very strongly that any plan that has the school starting before 8:30 should be voted no on. The research here is unequivocal and long-established, and it does not allow any of the benefits that were discussed, which includes fewer car accidents, less risk-seeking behaviors like smoking and drinking, less depression and suicidal tendencies, less obesity, the list goes on, but you don't get any of those benefits unless you start later than 8:30. So a plan that is significantly before 8:30, although it gives the appearance of a compromise, it's really a false one. It's, it's theater, not progress. There's no real improvement that would warrant shifting everything if you're not going to put it all the way to 8:30 and start to reap the benefits that the research shows you get when you push the time that late. I don't think there's any rush to do it. If more study needs to be done to find a way to move extracurricular activities around, move the busing, do a transportation study, I think that our teens' well-being warrants the extra research and that there is no reason to quickly vote in a plan that we know at the outset is not going to achieve the desired outcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen. James? Next, Bowie Cooper.
Hello, can you guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. So I've just come on here to talk about the late start time vote, and I just wanted to tell you guys from a student's perspective that the late start times have really helped me. Many of the people I know are much less tired, they're much mentally better, physically, mentally, socially. All the high schoolers I know are much better than they were during the time where we started at 7:25. And as somebody who's on a swim team and who has morning practices, I know how hard it is to wake up in the morning and just having, having, being able to wake up, being able to wake up later than 7:25 has really benefited a lot of us, and I know that for a fact. And whatever you guys vote on, I just, from a student's perspective, this is how we feel.
Thank you. Okay, with that, there's no more public comment, and I'll go to Superintendent Watson for...
Are we possibly going back to Natalie?
Is Natalie on? Good point, Howard.
I mean, she's still not there, then we can move on.
Okay, we can move on.
Still not seeing Natalie or James, so I don't think they've joined.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go to Superintendent Watson for COVID data update.
Thank you, President Colan. Cori, David, can you pull up the slide X, please?
We'll get there. I don't think that's it.
All right, thank you, everyone, for your patience. So again, an update on our blueprint, and we'll start with a COVID update. So a little different slide this week, we're looking at the total number of vaccine doses that have been administered throughout the state of Michigan. We're a little over 6.6 million. If you watched the governor, or watched Governor Whitmer's report today, you've noticed that reopening is going to be tied to thresholds, well, there's 55%, 60%, or 70% of those that are vaccinated in the state of Michigan. So one of our new slides will kind of show how many vaccine doses have been administered over time. Next slide, please. So looking at the COVID update, as far as the weekly COVID-9 report from Oakland County Health Division, you'll notice that in most cases, everything's down. We've got about 3,011 fewer cases than last time. Our seven-day moving average percent positive is down, as is the 28% positive average as well. Healthcare capacity is still at capacity or near capacity. Even though the trend is down and there are 3,000 fewer cases, the numbers are still fairly high in the state of Michigan. Next slide. So overall, we're starting to see numbers that are more similar to over, or early November. We're seeing counts that were about a month and a half ago, close to 800 or 900 per day. Now, we're seeing counts close to 4, sometimes 350 per day. So again, a good trend. Next slide, please. When we look at our hospitalizations, we look at our patients on ventilators and critical care as well, we've started to see a slow decline. It does not match the decline we're seeing in overall numbers. Next slide, please. Looking at case count and percent positive, we were fairly high in red. We are trending now to be in orange. Again, a good trend, but still fairly high numbers overall, with the percent positive being about a seven-day moving rate of about 11.1%. Next slide. As far as looking at the United States overall, we're seeing much more of a slower decline. Daily cases coming in at about 53,000 to 54,000 per day throughout the United States. Next slide, please. President Colan, I'll turn it over to you.
Any questions or comments? If you take down the slide, I could see... Nope, you can go to a staffing update?
All right, staffing update. So we have 229 staff that are recovered or have returned, two currently that are quarantined, 24 active FMLA, and two workers that are on disability. Next slide. And this is going to be a little different format. We're going to look at 90-day snapshots to really see what's going on, to kind of break it down a little bit different. So in the past 90 days, resignations, retirements for teachers, there's been three. For specialized education teachers, there's been one. New hires, we've hired five new teachers. We've hired two new additional special education teachers, one psychologist or social worker. And then our current open positions, we have three teaching positions open, this is for certified staff, one specialized education teacher, and, oh, sorry, eight special education teachers. Let me talk about that for a minute. Most of these are going to be positions for next year we're looking to fill. They're not currently vacant, so these are new positions we're looking to fill. Therapists or physical occupational speech, two, and then we're looking for three psychologists and social workers. Next slide, please. Looking at non-certified staff, resignations, retirements, one paraprofessional, one instructional assistant, two in the preschool Latchkey program, two drivers, one aide. New hires in the past 90 days, we've hired six paraprofessionals, one instructional assistant and one driver. And then looking at our current open positions, we have seven paraprofessional positions open, two instructional assistants, four in the preschool and Latchkey program. We need 18 drivers, one aide, and one mechanic. Next slide, please. President Colan, I'll turn it back over to you.
Any questions? Nope. I will go to my president's report. So first and foremost, I want to thank our teachers in advance of Teacher Appreciation Week, which starts on May 3. On behalf of the Board, we want to thank all of our teachers for everything that they do. I want to take the rest of my time tonight to tell a story about how some of our students went above and beyond for their community and a greater cause this spring. The students wanted to give back both to the children of Bloomfield Hills and to an organization that provides services to victims of child abuse and neglect. Though not original, the idea was new to our community and ingenious during the pandemic. The fundraiser was called Egg My Yard, whereby they sold plastic Easter eggs filled with treats and toys, and then hid the eggs the night before Easter Sunday in yards across the district. They provided Easter egg hunts for 111 families after filling over 4,000 eggs. The students, led by Sammy Kukuku, Courtney Atkinson, and Abby Sung, and mentored by Krista LaLiberty, spent hours shopping, grouping, filling, organizing, packing bags, and hiding eggs in yards all over our community. On the evening before Easter, teams of students were out well past midnight getting the job done. In addition to managing orders, researching products, and shopping, they were strategic about the balance and selection in every egg. They gathered property information from each customer to account for the safety of the volunteers in the dark. They reminded homeowners to leave lights on and keep their pets inside. They strategically assigned groups of homes by location and utilized an app that already had addresses preloaded for each driver. Each homeowner, each homeowner received a text when they were on their way, and a text thanking them for their support after the job was complete. We are proud of the feedback from our community. Here are just a few of the many comments that I received. Awesome job, phenomenal communication, can't wait for the morning. What a fantastic fundraiser and so much work and careful planning. This is the coolest thing and so helpful for us tired and forgetful parents. Hope this happens every year. Thank you for, thank you all that put this together and helped deliver the eggs. Thank you, BHS students. Kids were super excited tomorrow morning. And thank you to the students for putting thoughtful placement of the eggs. They are not just thrown on the lawn. So thankful for such a great idea, happy to support such a good cause and great kids with their endeavor. Thank you so much. We had two nice gentlemen drive, deliver our eggs. They were so polite and grateful. Thank you, a job well done. Almost $3,400 was raised, and after expenses, our students donated $2,700 to the Care House of Oakland County. I'd like to thank the families of Bloomfield Hills for their support and recognize the following students for their hard work and commitment to excellence, and how they presented themselves out in the community and how they represented our school district. Abby Sung, Courtney Atkinson, Sammy Kukuku, Joey Pisano, Lexie Garay, Carson Brodsky, Seth Kruger, Rachel Friedland, Carly Bernard, Claire Spector, Max Fenster, Grant Puremueter, Robert Newlin, Benji Stern, Nathan Madlad Balem, Lindsay Zausmer, Nikki DePoneo, Rachel Shepard, Joe Hoag, Tommy Hedges, Mark Ventura, Riley Lopez, Jackson Herrick, Caroline Griffin, Parker Pagoda, Skylar Sterns, Shane Winter, Ellie Alberts, Ella Salz, Ashley Cronenberg, Julia Allen, Jaden Roth, Maeve Wright, Molly Herrick, Avery Kukuku. We are prouder than ever. Go Blackhawks.
So a couple of things I'm excited to talk about this evening. One, some of you've had the opportunity to work with our nurse, Dev Glazer. She was provided to us in part of our response to COVID on behalf of the Oakland County Health Division. Excited to announce that she is now a Bloomfield Hills School District employee, and she'll be with us to help us with all needs moving forward. We also communicated with our parents recently about the fall of 2021 regarding their intent, whether they want to come back to five days in person or they want to virtual. We've had a good response from our parents. And just a reminder to the parents that we'll reach out again in July for a final decision. We're just trying to be prepared for staffing and know that the decision, you know, you've made right now might change by the time we get to July, but in July, we'll be reaching out again for a final decision. Also excited about our summer learning opportunities that we're going to provide for our students. We have opportunities that are in-person or virtual so that we can meet the needs of our parents and our students based on where they're at for this summer. Also, tonight is the Michigan Association of School Board Awards, and we have a couple winners at the table tonight. So I'd like to first congratulate Trustee Matlow on earning the Certified Board Member Award, so congratulations. I know everyone's watching this, so I want to make sure you know what you're missing. And then also, and then also to honor President Colan on earning awards of merit and distinction. Congratulations. Also had the opportunity to visit buildings this week. I couldn't be more proud of our staff and students, to see the learning that's going on, the engagement, the excitement, the hard work, and just the fun, the fun of learning and seeing learning as fun. And building off that, we know next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I wish there was something I can say more than thank you from the bottom of my heart, but thank you every time I go into a building, every time I see a teacher, they're doing something amazing in this school district. They're going above and beyond, over and over and over. And the ask has been high this year, and it's been increasing each step of the way. We've had seven first days, and each time we've asked our staff, our teaching staff, "We need you to do more," seven different times, and each time, they've stepped up the plate and they've done it, and they've done it at the highest degree possible. And so thank you for that. President Colan, I'll turn it back over to you.
President Colan, Superintendent Watson, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for getting this district a full-time nurse. This is the third state I've lived in as a parent and many more as a student myself, and I was shocked when I came to Michigan that not only was there not a nurse in every building, there wasn't even a nurse in the district. I had never encountered that situation before, so I think we are making a huge, huge step in the, in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will go to consent agenda. Jonathan?
President Colan, could I just make a couple of statements? Sure, thank you. A few things. First, I just want to remind my fellow board members that because of the Open Meetings Act, we're not permitted to text during a board meeting, to our, to each other. Second of all, I wanted to, I owe all of you an apology. We have all been going through some training over the last month or so with a consultant, and I have not demonstrated respect, I have not righted wrongs, and in particular, I have not listened first, and that is wrong of me. I beg your indulgence and apology, and I will try... I beg your indulgence and apology, and I will try as hard as I can to improve my attitudes and the way I hopefully can instill more trust with the team of eight, which includes the superintendent and the cabinet and any other staff. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Howard. Thanks for that. With that, we will go to Jonathan for consent agenda.
Consent agenda. I moved that the Board of Education approved the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve board minutes, I'm sorry, request to approve minutes from the regular meeting on March 25, 2021. Request to approve minutes from a special meeting/boardwork session of April 13, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the study session of April 15, 2021. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Moved the Board of Education to approve the financial reports as presented. Moved that the Board of Education approved the dispersment reports as presented. I moved the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented. I moved that Jake McDermott be named alternate director to the MAISL Joint Risk Management Trust. Lastly, I moved the Board of Education award bid number T2106 Districtwide Access Control and Video Surveillance to DA Central for the amount of $2,21,865.60 funded from the bond fund in the amount of $1,722,932.20, and the remainder from the sinking fund in the amount of $298,933.40.
Thanks, John. Do I have support?
That's the last item.
Support.
So we have support. We will take a vote. We'll start with the people that are virtual first. Lisa? Michelle? Jonathan?
Yes.
Seva?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Okay, I'm yes. Consent passage.
Oh, is your mute button on your WebEx?
You can't hear me?
I think you're not coming through the, yeah.
Okay. I'm yes.
Yes.
Never mind.
You muted. It'll be in the mic.
It's in the mic, yeah, so I think that's why I did that.
Okay.
That's okay. Motion passed. General discussion, Seva, FFLA update?
All right. Thank you, Paul. So I've got three agenda items that was discussed at the FFLA. The first one was on the bond program. Overall, the bond project is a green for both funding and timing, so the budget's on track or the spending versus the budget's on track, and the timing versus the original plan is on track. The design company, French and Associates, provided an update as well as a construction update from Barton Mallow. The team is putting together a comprehensive communications plan, and we had some discussion around how to enhance that plan, including potentially a groundbreaking ceremony, and we're still evaluating that with the administration. The plan's pretty fluid. Karen Heige from Communications with support from her colleagues have put together a dashboard, which is now on the BHS website, which gives community members a good snapshot of where we are. It talks about our spending versus our budget, it talks about timing versus the original plan, so it's available on-site for community members to see, and it will be updated regularly. We also talked about getting into a lot of detail on multiple reports from, you know, Plant Moran Crassa, who's the owner's rep, you know, Barton Mallow, our internal reports. So given that there were multiple ways of looking at the numbers, the team agreed we would consolidate the reports into a simpler format, and the board is working with Tina to get that in place. We hope to have that put together shortly. So that's pretty much all I had on the bond update. The next item I'm going to talk about is the sinking fund. The current sinking fund goes through 2023, December of '23, and the administration's well aware of that and making sure they're working through to make sure we're calculating what the mileage should be for the renewal. The finance team needs to extend contracts with Barton Mallow as well as Dale French, and they're working through that. And lastly, our sinking fund spend asset right now is $2.36 million, and all of the projects are on track. So that was the second item I wanted to talk about. The last item to talk about is the Nature Center and Bowers Farm, and we had Ellen from the farm and nature center who gave us a presentation on where we stand, and the proposal is to move to put together a strategic plan for both these facilities and come back to the board with a detailed plan for future actions. So that will be forthcoming in the future. That's pretty much all I had to share. If you've got any questions.
Any questions from, first, for the people that weren't there. Any questions from people virtual? I don't see any. Jennifer, Howard, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to see from Superintendent, has there
Has there been any update on the possibility of a groundbreaking?
Yes. We're working on a date. We're looking at a May or potentially a June date, and we should have an update soon. You're welcome.
With that, we will go to Jennifer for what instructional committee update.
Should I have the WebEx mic unmuted?
No, you should have the mic closed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the board instructional committee, we last met on April the 12th. We talked about a few things, which I'm going to keep very brief because some of them are, we've already discussed at our last board meeting or are coming up tonight. The first item has to do with Bowers Academy, which we're going to hear all about in a few minutes. So in very brief, the proposal is to have limited school of choice for the program to obtain approximately 15 more students enrolling in grade 11, starting in the upcoming school year. The next item we talked about was school start times, which that entire discussion was recapitulated at our last board meeting on April 15th, so I'm not going to say anything more about that. We also talked about summer learning opportunities, which Superintendent Watson mentioned a few minutes ago. There are a lot of them. In very much brief, and I'll ask Assistant Superintendent Bidlak to correct me if I get any of these little details wrong, but what I have here is that for K-8, there's an in-person summer academy, which is meeting for two and a half hours a day, five days a week for eight weeks. There will be also a virtual classes for K-2, 30 minutes, grades three through eight, 45-minute classes. Those will be meeting three days a week for four weeks virtually. At the high school level, there are several different choices for either obtaining credit recovery for a failed or incomplete class, grade improvement, so a chance to retake a class to substitute a higher grade for an existing grade, or summer semester electives, which we've always had if kids want to get a leg up on getting a credit for a class they haven't taken before. There are going to be several different flavors of the high school classes. One iteration will be taught by our own teachers through BHHS. There's also Ed 2020 and Michigan Virtual, which are independent organizations offering classes, and then there is also a Bowers Summer Immersion Program. So the enrollment for these summer opportunities went live on Community Pass this week, and because there's a lot of detailed information, I recommend that community members reach out to their school counselors or teachers if they have more questions about what might be right for their students. And then, not quite in the BIT committee, but as an adjunct to the BIT committee, we've had a separate little committee meeting, we've met twice now, on the, to set metrics and targets for a strategic plan goal area one, which is academics and instruction. So we are moving that work forward and getting those established, and we anticipate one more meeting, and we will be done with that. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't see anyone virtual. Howard, Seva? Nope. Good job, Jennifer. Thank you. With that, we will go to the proposal for Bowers Criteria-Based School of Choice Programming. Dr. Eileen Meyer. End group.
Superintendent Watson and board, thank you so much for having me here tonight to talk about criteria-based school of choice for Bowers Academy. Just give it a moment for the slides to catch up. So far this year, Bowers Academy students have been hard at work with experiential learning and have been really embracing place in our unique learning experiences on Bowers Farm. We are interested in increasing our enrollment at Bowers Academy. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, can we go to the slideshow? That way it makes the slides a little bigger.
Do you want me to do that?
There we go. Thank you.
Awesome. So at Bowers Academy, we have some guiding viewpoints, and as a school community, we are committed to collaborative learning in a responsive, flexible, and experiential curriculum. We focus on restorative practices and restorative approaches to behavior, and we believe that social-emotional learning is critically important for the long-term success of all students. We emphasize connection to place and engage in experiential learning. And at Bowers, we work to develop strong partnerships to provide students with a variety of experiences to prepare them for their future. Tonight, we are here to present to you the application criteria for school of choice. So in accordance with State School Aid Act 105, we are going to open Bowers Academy for school of choice to students in Oakland County. And this year, for the first year, we are interested in increasing our enrollment for up to 15 school of choice applicants, and the applicants that we are seeking would be enrolling or entering for their junior year of high school. This school of choice proposition would be an application, I'm sorry, a criteria-based school of choice, and so there would be very specific criteria that students would need to meet in order to be considered. The students would agree to the terms and conditions of Bowers Academy as outlined in the student commitments. They would agree to meet and discuss a success plan in both an interview and orientation. They would understand and agree to their attendance commitment, attending school in person and on time each day. This would include arranging their own transportation as needed. Students would have independent daily living and grooming skills. Students would maintain appropriate behaviors and social skills as a part of their community in the experiential learning space, including effective communication with students, staff, and community members. And students would participate fully within the learning community, interacting appropriately with both animals and humans. So we have some really important guiding student commitments that we value at Bowers. The first one is attendance. As a place-based and experiential learning community, attendance is an essential part of our learning community. Collaborative learning is, it's our goal to support your growth and development as a learner in our community through collaborative, reflective, experiential, and cooperative learning experiences. We engage in place on a daily basis. Engagement on the farm is an essential part of the learning experience. And we also focus on college and career readiness. It is our goal to support you in the design of learning experiences outside of Bowers Academy campus prior to graduating. School of Choice has some really specific guidelines, including an application process and application window. So the online school of choice application window would be open from Monday, July 19th, and would close promptly at 4:00 PM on Friday, August 6th. If more than 15 students apply, if more than 15 applications are submitted, then all applicants who fit the criteria would be entered into a lottery. And the lottery also has some very specific guidelines. The lottery would take place on Tuesday, August 10th, here at Booth. The 15 applicants would be selected at random utilizing this lottery. Any remaining students would be maintained on a waitlist. The lottery selections will be notified on Friday, August 13th by phone. If students are selected to attend Bowers, the applicant must attend the interview and orientation in order to complete the enrollment process, and the deadline for the enrollment process would be August 30th. Any student who has not completed the enrollment process would no longer be considered, in which case, a student from the waitlist would be moved up. On, oops, sorry. On August 31st, any remaining seats will be filled by the applicants on the waitlist. Yes, thank you. And here is just a more detailed kind of chronological order of the application timeline that basically begins on July 19th, and the entire process is complete on Friday, September 10th, when the final date for status to change from the waitlist to enrollment eligible would be.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions? I'll start with the people. Okay. Pat? All right.
Thank you for the presentation. Just kind of want to think it through with you a little bit. So you're looking for a student that's interested in farm-based learning, right? They're going to be outside, they're going to be working with their hands, working on the farm, it's going to be experiential, so probably not the best for someone who's afraid of goats and sheep and things like that. So once that student's interested, then they have to apply, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. After they apply, then they have to meet the criteria, correct?
Yes.
And then after that, they come in for an interview to make sure it's a good fit for not only you, but for the other students? Is that correct?
Yes, and that's why the interview process is so important, because it's onsite, and so the student will have a chance to see the space where they'll be learning, and they'll have a chance to talk through what a day in the life looks like. There will be some really specific question and answer, talking about the student's goals, talking about the student's interests, talking about the student's interest in really engaging in this community-based learning that we have, because every day is hands-on and every day is different. They'll be out, you know, working with the cows and the goats and the sheep and the pigs, working in the gardens, working on produce, bringing produce up to our farm store, interacting with the community on a regular basis. So it's a really, really experiential, hands-on, unique learning opportunity.
Thank you.
I have a question. So who is part of the interview process? Is it the two of you or?
So the interview process would be myself, probably Margaret, the academy team, which is, consists of math and science teachers, social studies, social worker counselor, and then anybody else from the farm who would have input would be a great addition so that they can, you know, just kind of expand the process and talk through what a day in the life looks like.
And my other question is, it's opened up to Oakland County?
Yes.
Okay. Seva?
So, Dr. Myers, I had the opportunity to visit the farm with Superintendent Watson. Amazing facility and great, great faculty and staff. What's our total capacity?
Close in to the microphone.
Sorry. What's our total capacity?
That's a great question. We typically have 25 to 30 students enrolled. This year, we only have 19 students, and 12 of them are in 12th grade. So we have the capacity for approximately 50, maybe a little bit more than 50 students at the academy side of the farm.
So the 15 that we're considering here would not impact our own BHS?
No, and we also left a little bit of, a lot of wiggle room too, because our enrollment this year is 19, and we usually have between 25 and 30, so that also takes into account the possibility of increasing our enrollment a little bit from Bloomfield Hills main campus as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing?
So basically, any BHHS student?
So basically, any BHHS student who wanted to be at Bowers Academy would have a space?
If they fit the criteria. Because any BHHS student also is using, we use the same criteria for anybody who wants to apply and enroll.
Got it. Howard, then Lisa?
Lisa wants to go.
Okay, Lisa? Lisa?
I apologize. It's really hard to hear you, anyone in person who's on WebEx. So I know that's not the case for people watching on live stream, but it's really, really, really hard to hear. Anyway, my question is, so school of choice is new for Bloomfield. We've never had that before. What happens, I know that priority is given to Bloomfield students and that sometimes students switch programs in the middle of the year, so we won't, I'm assuming we're not going to max out in case, you know, mid-year, one of our students decides that they need to or would like to be in Bowers Academy. My question is, are there additional costs above the school of choice funding that we will receive in Bloomfield? And if so, who's covering those costs?
Do you mean additional cost to?
Everyone, I think if you lean closer to the mic, I think we'll have easier time for people to understand what you're saying.
It is. I'm sorry. It is really hard to hear.
So if we increase our enrollment by adding 15 additional school of choice students, we wouldn't have to add any additional staff or any additional space, so there wouldn't be any additional costs.
So they have the same per pupil funding that we have from Bloomfield, all the students of choice students that we're going to be admitting?
School of choice students are included in the district's enrollment and the district receives foundation allowance funding based upon enrollment. So that is including the whole harmless portion of the foundation allowance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Howard?
So a few things. Following up on what Trustee Kumar was asking, or it's more of a statement than a question on this, as we go into next year and we kind of see how this whole thing works out with schools of choice and having Bloomfield students and non-Bloomfield students together, I'd really love to have another report to us over the next year or so in terms of that between 30 going to 50. What is our, what is our plan? Do we sort of want to be at 30 for a while and then, or stay 30 forever, or do we want to increment over the next two to three years? So where are we going to be in five years from now? So we don't need to answer that now, but it's sort of, I know this is an experimentation type of thing, but it's something that I think we need to be thinking long-term and then sort of working backwards in terms of where do we want to be and what's that glide path, either flat or up to get to there. I'm sorry?
Superintendent, do you want to ask your other question?
Yeah, and I really wanted to thank Mr. Bidlak. He and I spent a lot of time and I really, really thank you, Mr. Bidlak, for the time you gave me to answer some of these questions, but I think that was an outstanding issue. I'm sorry, Superintendent.
Trustee Baron, if the board decides to go in this direction, I'd like to personally invite you to spend a day at Bowers with me and we'll shadow students. But I've learned that you need to wear boots because there are things in the barn that you're going to step on that don't come off dress shoes as easily as possible. So this is the way, either way, regardless, I would love for the two of us to spend a day at Bowers with the students. It will be amazing.
I used to call those excrement pickers.
So either way, it's a date.
One question to you guys and then one question to the superintendent. So the one question to you guys is, you talk about experimental learning.
Experiential.
Experiential, excuse me. How would that compare and contrast to what we've sort of learned, you know, euphemistically as project-based learning?
So project-based learning can be kind of like, it can be a one-and-done and it doesn't necessarily have to be connected to anything in the real world. You're, you can't, great teachers would connect it to something, you know, that is applicable to maybe like an outside project or something like that. Experiential learning is completely experiential, real-world, hands-on, it's for something. So we're not in a classroom space and building a pretend store so that we can learn finance. We're actually in the farm store. The students at Bowers Academy built the farm store, they imagined it from the ground up, and now it is a full store that the community accesses often. So the difference between, I guess, project-based learning and place-based learning is that project-based learning is creating projects and place-based learning or experiential learning is really embracing the place and embracing the experiences that occur at that place and utilizing the student resources and the knowledge and the skills that the students bring to the table to support the community within that space.
So from the pedagogical standpoint and the student learning standpoint, do the students get as much from place-based learning, if not more, than they would through project-based learning?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. And then a question to, or at least a follow-up to a conversation or a tech emailing back and forth with the superintendent over the last few days related to this. Just, we got part of the way through the answer and there was kind of a TBD that I just want to confirm. The students that are community, I'm sorry, school of choice into Bowers, do they, can they take advantage of co-curricular activities and sports that Bloomfield Hills offers? Or do they use their home school or their home district for those activities?
They would be our students, so they could participate in the club and then athletics. They would have to either try out for a team and make a team if it's a cut sport. They also would need to be eligible. There's transfer requirements and things like that. There's 15 exceptions.
But there is going to be therefore some transportation or at least, you know, working with the BHHS student body and with the Bowers.
Potentially, yes, potentially.
Potentially, sure.
Yes. You are correct. Trustee Baron.
Okay, with that, thank you very much, Eileen, for the presentation. We will go now to special education and equity overview. Jennifer Peron.
Hi, again. This time I'm actually speaking. Thank you. I'm going to get to the first page. So Jennifer Peron and I are here to talk about special education and equity and give just an update. It's going to be a little long, but we have a lot to talk about, so we're excited about it. The reason why we really wanted to be here together, we have been working really hard to align our work. We do not see equity and special education as separate. We see them as the same. And so we, as you see up here, this is kind of our program alignment, the things that we have really tried to collaborate on and intentionally build out together. So we're going to give you an update of our SEL curriculum, our bond design work, the Links program, Unified Sports and Therapy Dogs are our kind of combined projects. And then we'll also be giving updates on our individual products as well. Let me go to the next slide. We put this in here because obviously like all of our work is aligned to the strategic plan. And so in goal one, there are seven objectives. So these are the six objectives that will be covered as we go through our presentation tonight. All of our work, of course, is aligned to our strategic plan, so we thought it was important to note that, but I'm not going to read that to you. Next page. Next slide. All right.
Thank you, Board, for inviting us here to talk tonight. Anytime we're going to talk about special education, I always like to give just a brief overview. I know special education can be very overwhelming, there's a lot of information that goes along with it. And so I always like to remind anyone that we're speaking to that special education is not a place. It is a set of services that we provide to students who qualify for those services because they have a disability and in order to be successful in the general education environment. And we have stated time and time again, it is a belief that we live by, but that all students are general education students first. Next slide. Just to go over some of the requirements in special education, again, these are all based in law. So there's the IDEA law, the ADA law, and of course, our Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education. And they all basically say the same thing. We cannot discriminate, we have to ensure that all general education interventions have been tried with fidelity prior to determining eligibility, that we've educate, anytime that a student qualifies for services, they're being educated in their least restrictive environment. We have to be compliant and follow the laws and procedures that are laid before us. And most importantly, and probably one of the most important words in special education, is FAP, which is a Free Appropriate Public Education. And that's the basis of all the services we provide. Next slide.
So I put on here, I think it's important that we operate with kind of the theme idea around what words mean. And I think equity, inclusion have kind of become words that people are using a lot. So I put these definitions in here because I think it's important that we kind of have the same working understanding of what these words mean. These definitions were developed by the Oakland County DEISJ, which is Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Social Justice Council, and its members from throughout Oakland County. I'm a part of that group, there are other members as well from Bloomfield Hills. So these I will read. Equity is an imperative process of removing barriers and creating spaces by intentionally putting it at the forefront, ensuring access for all while amplifying diverse voices that are treated as insignificant and are unacknowledged. Inclusion intentionally uses privilege or honor benefits to amplify those who are treated as insignificant and unacknowledged so that their voices are heard and valued and every individual feels a sense of belonging. So these, we kind of wanted to talk about the intention and focus of our work, all of our work and then collectively as well. So to rethink special education work together to create a system of support that is governed by conscience, provides compliance and ensures education benefit for students, to uplift a community of diverse ideas that fosters understanding, acceptance, respectful civil discourse, and inclusion, to create an environment for the district to have meaningful dialogue and learn from one another, to center the voices of our students, going beyond the superficial attention to student voice, to a more robust vision of power sharing with our young leaders, and to understand the why behind what we do.
So just to follow up on what Margaret just discussed in terms of those definitions. And one of the things that we've kind of charged ourselves with is to really make sure that everything, all of the work that we're doing is really focused on equity and inclusion. And our goal is to get to a place in this district where we don't have to refer to inclusion as something that's identified separately, but something that is just embedded in the work that we do and create a very socially inclusive environment district-wide. With that, and one of the first steps towards that has been our work on the bond. I know that we had presented previously, but we felt it was important to come back to this. We have really focused all of the design work at the middle schools and now as we're working on the elementary design on being very inclusive with very intentional planning on the location of all of our classrooms. Currently, all of our special education spaces are literally in the hub of where all general education students will be. And that we are really focusing on creating what we believe will be a state-of-art facility that really focuses on embedding accessibility throughout the buildings so that we don't have to specifically identify spaces where our students with disabilities can access. They should be able to access the entire building. And the goal is to allow them to access those spaces as independently as possible. And so some of the different accessibilities that we're looking at, this is not all-inclusive, but we're talking about embedding braille walls, making sure there's sound systems in all of the classrooms, the enhanced lighting, all entrances and exits that general education students would leave from, students with disabilities could access as well, accessible playgrounds and calming spaces. We're also enhancing our learning spaces for our students. And so we will be having pool kitchens, laundry, showers, et cetera, in all of our educational spaces. And then, of course, we've also worked into the design a zero-entry pool that will be located at North Hills. And so even our students from Wing Lake will be coming over and utilizing that space. And so again, the goal is to kind of create that inclusive community, that it's not just specific to the students in the building. Next slide. Excuse me. The Links program. This is something I could not be more excited to present to you tonight. It is amazing what has happened and transpired in just a year, and that was in the midst of COVID. So we have initiated a peer-to-peer program and it's fully, it's fully implemented at the high school and will continue to grow. The reason I put this picture up here is because these are the shirts that the students have identified and selected for their groups. So they will be ordering them soon and you'll see students wearing them around the high school. Next slide, please. So the Links program is a peer-to-peer support program that really focuses on increased opportunities for our students with disabilities to be integrated into those general education settings as independently as possible and working as closely with possible with their peers. So currently at the high school, again, in the midst of COVID, we have a total of 51 students who have chosen to be Links at the high school. They've registered for the class, they are taking it for credit, and they have created 50 new friends, 51 new friendships with students throughout the school. And we're looking to grow this opportunity. Some of the activities that the Links enjoyed in the middle of COVID was some outdoor interactions through study sessions, nature hikes. There was a number of virtual opportunities as well. They had Netflix parties, they played video games, they would FaceTime and have lunch. We have also started a pilot of the Links program at BHMS. And some of the comments from the staff, we've started it with one fifth-grade classroom and it's only been up and running for about a month. The genuine care is amazing and unwavering, and they're speaking of the general education peers. I'm amazed with the observations and insights that the students have and they show a genuine compassion for our student. Here are just some testimonials. I'm not going to read them all to you, but as you'll see, the top one is from a parent. And she indicated, "I hate school. School is ruining my life. I don't have any friends to play with." And these are words from her daughter. Prior to the peer-to-peer program, my daughter would refuse to go out for recess, eat lunch under her desk, and rarely participate in the classroom. And now that student is literally done a 180. She is outside playing with her peers, her peers are coming up and asking her to engage both in the classroom and outside. And so she indicated, "To say that I've seen a remarkable change would be an understatement." She has made friends, she plays with them at recess, she's engaging in the classroom and she is more confident and happy. And again, this program has only been implemented for the last month. Next slide. I put this on here because I felt this was really powerful, because these are quotes from our general education peers, our Links. And so on the side with the, where the quotes are, those are just different activities that the students have partaken in with their counterparts. And so we made Link lip sync videos together, it was so much fun. I invited my peer to have lunch with my friends and I over Zoom. We hung out over Zoom this weekend just talking. We FaceTimed for lunch and I got to meet my peer's family. I saw my peer take initiative on one of his classes and it was a really big step for him. And the last quote that I put on there that indicates I don't feel lonely anymore, that actually came from one of the peers. And then...
Can I just, this is different than the Link crew.
Yes.
Do we still have the Link crew?
No.
Oh. Okay. I didn't know that went away.
Okay, next slide. So as an extension of the Links peer-to-peer program, we will also be initiating Unified Sports in the fall. It's basically an extension of the program. Again, it is expanding on the social inclusion piece that we keep referring to and speaking about. And it's sports where you have students without disabilities who are playing sports with students with disabilities. And so they are on a team together. They will have, they can play other Unified Sports teams across the county, we can have intramural, or we can have them where they're playing just with teams within the district. But we are looking to open this up in the fall and we are working with, Athletic Department is working closely with the Special Olympics of Michigan to initiate and launch this. We also intend to use the exercise rooms that we're building into the middle schools as places for the Unified Sports practices to take place or in even some of the competitions to take place as well. Next slide. So I just want to briefly talk about the social emotional learning curriculum that is new for us this year. And in the past, social emotional learning could have been seen as a responsibility of social workers. Our social workers are amazing and have always been doing one-on-one SEL with students. But we've been really intentional this year about creating a curriculum for every single student K-12. And we know that all students can benefit from an inclusive social emotional learning curriculum.
And we know that all students can benefit from an inclusive social emotional learning curriculum. So we have teachers, social workers and counselors have been collaborating to support all of our students. We have a team of curriculum writers that have been writing since the summer to put out weekly 30-minute lessons for all students K-12. And so all of our students are experiencing that this year. And it's really exciting, I'm really excited really to dig in after having, we've been building as we go, which has been amazing, but also I'm really excited this summer to be able to go back and start revising and start figuring out how to make it even better. So I'm really proud of the SEL leadership team that has been really doing the writing work and also just the fact that all of our students are experiencing this this year has been pretty awesome. Next slide. I wanted this slide because I'm so excited. I was like, I just really wanted to do this slide. So this is Daisy. So you know, when we came to you before and talked about the therapy dog program, at that time, we did not know exactly who our dogs were going to be. Daisy is going to be one of our dogs. She starts her training in June. And in a few weeks, we will have our second dog. We did meet, Jennifer and I got to meet Daisy's brother a month ago, maybe. So we are currently working with Communications on how this is going to launch, the fundraising efforts and letters to home for families so that we can also be ahead of working one-on-one with any families that may have concerns. So we're just really, really excited about Daisy coming into the district.
Okay, now for, in my opinion, what is probably one of the most exciting things that we ventured into in our department this year. So this is just a visual of our current continuum of programs and services. There's no new information on here, it is what you're all familiar with. General Education, General Education Resource Teachers 504 Plan. And then our programs and services that we offer when students are identified for special education. And so you'll see our ARP programs on here, our FRP programs on here, and then of course, our center-based programs. Next slide. We are venturing on a very big shift in our special education program over the next couple of years. And I honestly could not be more excited about it. So on the left, you'll see our current continuum of services. We offer services for students birth to three. Our staff go into the homes to provide those services. We offer special education services for students three to five. And that's done through our special education, special education early childhood programs. And then we currently offer Resource Room Directed Studies, ARP, FRP and PrEP in our center programs. We are looking to shift our future continuum of services to continue to provide early on, to continue to provide the special education for early childhood. But then we are looking to shift all of our K-12 special education services to level programs. We will have levels one, two, three and four. They will be located at all buildings, so students should not have to shift buildings to receive services that they may need. And all of them will be identified as Resource Room. They will not be identified, as you can see on the left, where our current programs are identified, ARP is mildly cognitively impaired and our FRP is moderately cognitively impaired. And the remaining programs will remain the same. Next slide. So you're probably asking, "Why? Why are we making this shift?" In the presentations that I've given previously, we've talked about compliance. We have not entirely been in compliance with the programs and services that we've offered up to this point. Moving to this system will bring us into compliance with both the Marsh rules and the Oakland ISD plan. The purpose behind this change is really to move away from a disability-driven system. And to really move us to a student needs system that focuses on specially-designed instruction for students. It also increases our continuum of services because we are looking to bring some of our students back that are currently placed in center programs, and this will allow us that opportunity to do it. In my opinion, most importantly is to stop the label. That we move away from any stigmatization around categorical classrooms or labeling students with IEPs. And you'll see that there are some quotes, both from Oakland Schools, the Office of Special Education at the federal level and our own Department of MDE that basically all state the same thing, that we need to be focusing on specially-designed instruction and we need to be making placement decisions on the needs of students and not the label. Next slide. So our guiding principles for our level programs is that any student who attends any of the four levels can attend general education and special education classes. They'll receive all of the accommodations that they need. If they require paraprofessional support, that will be based on individual needs as well. They will follow the general education curriculum with either accommodations or modifications. They may take the state and district assessments, again with accommodations on their IEP, and they may receive a regular diploma, certificate of academic achievement or certificate of attendance. So participation in any one level would not limit a student from being able to move forward in their educational career. The level programming for students will be based on identified needs in the areas of academic, independence, engagement, behavior and social. And we will offer multiple programming options and we will also focus on students' dignities and move away from classroom labels, but most importantly, it provides us greater flexibility to educate our students. Next slide. So the process, this is definitely not something that will happen overnight and it continues to be a work in progress. And all of the work that we're doing is aligned to the work that came out of the Special Education Design Committee. And so we are continuing to work with the subgroup on really kind of narrowing down what these level programs will look like, the characteristics of the students that define them. And so all of that takes time. And we also want to make sure that our staff are very prepared to move into this new model. And so we are taking all of next year to provide very strategic professional development to our staff to prepare them for this move that will really focus on analyzing caseloads, the peer-to-peer model that we spoke of, universal design for learning, heaven and space, high-level practices for students with IEPs, specially-designed instruction, executive functioning and meeting mechanics. In 2021, '22, this fall as well, we will be opening two Level Four classrooms. One will be located at Lone Pine and one will be located at West Hills. And we will be looking to bring back a few of our students from center programs over the next year for those programs as well. And '22, '23 is when we will look to do full implementation of the level programming district-wide. At that time, ARP, FRP, Directed Studies and Resource Rooms will no longer be identified with Bloomfield Hills. To support the work that we're doing, and in many, many conversations with Superintendent Watson, we will be adding instructional coaches to each of the buildings K-8. They will be part-time in each building to help us really move forward in this work. And really, our goal is to, to the greatest extents possible, to push that learning back into the general education classroom and to provide modeling and coaching for our teachers, both general education and special education around evidence-based strategies for all students. We're also adding a behavioral coach that will support district-wide, both staff and students. Again, with the primary focus on modeling and coaching. We will be adding social work support so that we have at least one social worker in every building. And they will be focusing on both special education and general education with a focus on social emotional learning. And then, of course, the Level Four Classroom staff. And so the goal is to return students, but we'll also be servicing students within our own district or students that are new to us in the fall. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to our center supervisors, Rebecca and Trevor.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you. So our center programs still will remain the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program and Wing Lake SXI and SCI. And in our center programs, we follow the Oakland County Special Ed LRE Continuum, which focuses on IEP teams that make decisions, and the IEP teams include the parents, to determine where students will thrive and obtain their most appropriate educational benefit. So the lighter green is all of the local services. That's the levels one through four that Jennifer just discussed. The second box from the top is Integrated Center Programs. And that is a center program like the DHH program that runs within a general ed building. And then there are the separate center programs where there's no intent to integrate students with gen ed peers, and that is where Wing Lake falls. So the students that fall into the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Programs and Wing Lake, they are students who need more supports. They need the intensity, frequency, duration of their needs or of their behaviors or other related needs drive the level of support and drive their need for that center program. And the programs themselves have resources that are specific to that student. So for example, Wing Lake, we have nurses, we have staff that are used to taking care of personal care needs. And Trevor's DHH program, they have all of the Deaf and Hard of Hearing equipment to service the students. Next slide.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you. I haven't met a lot of you in person before. I've seen you on Zoom multiple times. My name is Trevor Harker and I am the special education supervisor for the district that oversees the DHH program. So right now, I'm going to give you a brief overview of our center programs and what they entail. We have our Wing Lake services and they service students ages three to 26 with the primary disability of severe cognitive disabilities and severe multiple impairments. The maximum amount of students at Wing Lake is 111 students. And we currently have 97 students enrolled. For the DHH program, which services students preschool through 12th grade whose IEPs are determined placement to be in the DHH program, the maximum amount of students that we have in our program is 65. We currently have 56. Now, Oakland County ISD has said that due to the pandemic, the DSR or District Service Request that students require to get into our program have been a lot less than normal. So they do anticipate over the next couple of months, over the beginning of next year, that we will see an influx of students. So that brings us to the referral process. How does a student get into a center program? And that's through what we call the District Service Request in Oakland County. The school districts and their IEP teams, as Rebecca said, it's an IEP team decision. They consider placement, they ask the question, "Do we have the supports and services required to support this specific student?" And if they do not, then they look outside for a center program. And that's why we have our students within the Wing Lake and the DHH program. Next slide.
So Trevor talked a little bit about the referrals. We are already starting to see some referrals come in. So at Wing Lake alone, just this week, we've received three additional referrals. And so we are really excited about that possibility. So tonight, I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about Wing Lake, adding to what I shared two weeks ago or so. At Wing Lake, we have 11 classrooms, four for students with severe cognitive impairments, elementary to post-secondary, and seven classrooms for students with severe multiple impairments, preschool to post-secondary. We have year-round instruction. So our school year begins in July and it ends at the end of June. 202 school days, our staff works 209 days so that they can participate in professional development. And most of you, I believe now, have been over to Wing Lake and you know that our program is very focused on providing comprehensive educations to our students so that they can reach their fullest potential. And we provide adapted PE, music, all of the academics, community-based instruction, and then also anything that the students' IEP outlines as their needs. So we are constantly focused on their IEP goals and objectives. And all of our ancillary-related services push into the classroom, but then they also are, again, individually based on what students need. So moving forward with Wing Lake, we are really excited to share that we are going to continue focusing on literacy and numeracy. For the last four years, we've focused on literacy through the work of Karen Erickson and David Koppenheimer and the Project Core as well. We have Project Core, Core Universal Language that we use throughout the building. We have been focused on social emotional learning all of the time, but especially this year. All of our teachers have done an amazing job with their templates. They've done weekly templates since April 13th of 2020, the beginning of the pandemic. And they include everything from academic areas to the ancillary-related services to social emotional learning. It's been pretty incredible and one of our parents in the family perspective will get to tell you about that as well. Next year, we're really hoping to increase our community-based instruction. We want to get our adult transition students back out in the community. But even more, we want to provide them opportunities to do some sort of work-based learning, not to the same level that prep students may, but to the level that they're able. So whether it's volunteering in the community, anything that they can do to be supportive and learn some job skills, pre-vocational skills. And then, of course, we want to increase opportunities for all of our students at Wing Lake to participate with typically developing same-age peers in the district. So even as Jennifer was talking about LINKS, I was thinking, "Oh, my gosh, we can have some of the LINKS come over to Wing Lake. That would be amazing." And then we cannot wait for our zero-entry pool to open over at the North Hills Middle School because our students just lost access to the pool that we were using in the community at the Jewish Community Center. It is now closed and so we have not been able to swim for some time. So we're really excited for that opportunity. So with that, first and foremost, with Teacher Appreciation, Staff Appreciation Week next week, I just wanted to give a big shout-out to the Wing Lake staff. As I shared a few weeks ago, they have been working with unmasked students since the day we returned to school in September without any complaints. They have been, we've been really fearful, but we've been getting through it and still providing the great level of care that they provide. And then to end my part on Wing Lake, I wanted to share two family perspectives. So just a short video from the Elder family and the Schullers.
Hello, my name is Kevin Elder.
And I'm Nikki Elder. Our son Dylan has been a student at Wing Lake since the end of 2012. He enrolled in Wing Lake after we relocated back to Michigan from California. And we knew that when we returned back to the area, it was really important for Dylan to attend Wing Lake. It was really important to us.
So when I think about what Wing Lake means to Dylan, to our family, the one word that comes to mind is peace of mind. For us, Wing Lake, or me specifically, Wing Lake is really about a place where Dylan can be loved, he can be nurtured, he can be challenged, he can have a lot of laughter. People treat him like he's a king. I think he'd actually rather spend more time there than at home, which kind of breaks my heart. But they take such good care of him. And I said this before, I just really feel like the people that work there are truly angels on earth for the work they do and the compassionate love that they show.
Dylan absolutely thrives in the school environment at Wing Lake because of what Kevin mentioned in terms of the staff there seeing the potential in each student regardless of what it is and recognizing those differences. And so it's truly beneficial to Dylan to be in such a loving and nurturing environment that sees no boundaries for what he can accomplish. We really appreciate the staff at Wing Lake. We appreciate the opportunity that Dylan has had at the school and we're very fortunate for him to be a student there.
Thank you very much, guys, really appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Nikki and my son Parker is 13 and attends Wing Lake. Just wanted to take a quick minute to talk about how awesome Parker's virtual experience has been this year. It's hard to think back to a year or so ago and remember that this was not something that teachers knew how to do. There was not a template for this. And now it seems like they always knew how to do this and how to do it as well as they did it. So the professionalism in which his team has brought to creating this virtual experience so quickly, basically out of nothing, has been inspiring. Also, with a child like Parker who is needing help, a big team to help him and then also help at home, the ability to watch and work with his team every day this year and learn so much about all the small things that they do to help Parker improve his strength, there's eating or stretching, whatever, the list goes on and on. I have now been able to watch over and over and over again and learn from. So not only are we having this great experience when he's live on Zoom or Google Meet, but then also when we're off-camera, it's given me the ability to translate a lot of what was happening at school to his home environment. The other thing that's been so wonderful is that because Parker has, part of his syndrome is a disease of energy, sometimes he just doesn't have the energy at that moment to do whatever is happening. And the flexibility of the virtual program to not only be on live classes, but then also the templates that were created that can be done at any time has been great. the templates that were created that can be done at any time has been great because then we can just fill in the blanks of his learning as his strength and energy calls for it. So overall, it has been just such a fantastic year for him and I can't have enough gratitude for his incredible team who has brought so much joy and professionalism straight through the screen and into our home every day. And one of the best parts of the day is waking up and seeing how excited Parker is. Still, this many months in, to jump on and see everybody and learn. So thank you so much.
We're going to move to the next slide. And we get to talk about our amazing deaf and hard of hearing program. Rebecca talked a little bit about what specialized services and instruction that we offer within the DHH program. And I want to talk to you a little bit before we get started about our staff. We talked about how next week is staff appreciation. Sure. Is that better? About staff appreciation. And even though next week's staff appreciation, we try our best to appreciate staff every single day. They were forced into uncharted waters this year and our DHH program in itself, there are so many variables at play. And they've all done a wonderful job of being resilient, being flexible, working as a team and doing their best to navigate these waters together with our team. Next slide, please. So I want to start off first by having one of our parents come up from the DHH program to talk about their experience this year and...
Well, thank you. I wanted to come in person tonight to say thank you to each one of you because my name is Kathleen Corolla and thank you for this opportunity to celebrate the success of my amazing daughter, Anne Fay. Anne Fay is nine years old and she's a second grader in the DHH Bloomfield Virtual Program. She was born deaf-blind in Nanyang, China and was left on the doorsteps there and we adopted her when she was four. From the beginning, we were just amazed at her curiosity, her determination, her problem-solving abilities, but the question was always, how do we unlock that amazing potential? Well, this school year, Anne Fay's self-confidence has exploded, resulting in accelerated achievement in nearly every area of her life, from science, math, reading in both print and Braille, to communication through ASL. She's achieved more than anyone thought was possible in one school year. It's been amazing. And I can sum up the reason for this miraculous achievement in one word: communication. It's been amazing. Her teacher, Kelly Parrish, has worked hand-in-hand with her intervenor Angela Catra Patani and her VI Julie Uniton to create a virtual learning experience that provided her the opportunity to succeed. And Anne Fay's entire team worked together to make learning cohesive and fun for her. She's mainly a tactile learner, so virtual has been very challenging for her, but she has worked so hard. But with virtual learning, I was at front and center, just like Nicole said. I was front and center to everything she was doing. I was learning along with her and I was able to take the school lessons and put them into every area of her life. The switch was flipped. She now can understand, she now understands that school is the key to opening and exploring her world. She loves school and she works so hard every day. So communication with the entire team made this life-changing, this life-changing difference for Anne Fay. And as part of the team, I began to understand how Anne Fay learns and could show her how this knowledge benefits her day-to-day life. Parents work hard with the teachers to support the education of their children and because of the team effort this year, Anne Fay has shown tremendous progress. She starts lessons with a smile, most of the time, and she does her best to complete the given task each day. She's worked so hard and she's achieving so much because of the communication and dedication of her amazing team. Thank you, thank you, thank you for providing this opportunity for my daughter. Thank you to each of you.
Okay, back to slides, please. All right, so Ms. Perone already talked to us today about the initiatives that we are going to put forth in the progress of our special education department and district moving forward. However, we also need to talk about the great things that have happened this year. We talked about our staff being resilient, being flexible and doing great things, for example, like what we were able to do with Anne Fay. But we also had the opportunity to build community partnerships this year. So one of those main focuses of mine as I came into this position is to think about how we could work with our community partners, our nonprofits within the Oakland County and Wayne County area, and capitalize on that to help us work together because we truly are stronger together and can provide more resources for our family. So this year, we've worked with the Holly Institute to provide some online virtual learning. Holly Institute is an extension of Ascension Hospital Systems and they're also willing to work with us on providing more free opportunities, resources and camps for our families. And we'll be, we'll be moving on that shortly. In addition, we're working with Hands and Voices to provide mentorship and guides for our families. And the DIA and DeafCAN, the DIA Detroit Institute of Arts teamed up with us this year to have a deaf artist come to us. She did an interview with us. She provided a art tutorial for our students that they're all putting together. And we're going to find a place within the district where we can display this mural, basically, that they're making. In addition, we're working with Deaf Blind Central. And Deaf Blind Central is out of Central Michigan University and they really focus on intervenor support and supporting our deaf-blind students. And they're working with us to put together a certification for some of our substitutes who would be interested in intervening when an intervener is absent. So we've got some great things going on. And next year, my hope is to really focus on educating and informing, not only within the district as far as providing PDs across the district on supporting deaf learners, but also making sure that whatever we're doing in the district moving forward with accessibility, accommodations, when we're building our new middle schools, making sure that universally, we are making, having accommodations and accessibility available to all. And then working at the county level on making sure that everybody's informed on what our DHH program has to offer to also make sure that our students within other districts are being supported and if they need support, then they know where to go to. To end us today, we do have a video from Diana Campbell. She is our district ASL specialist and she's going to talk to you a little bit about our family sign language classes that we're going to be starting next year, back up next year, and then also welcome you to come to join us at our program.
Good evening. My name is Diana Campbell and I am the ASL specialist for the Bloomfield Hills Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program. I'm here this evening to share with you information about our family sign language classes. Family sign language classes are for everyone. They include students, their families, and any other community member interested in learning American Sign Language, also known as ASL. The Bloomfield Hills School Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program has been hosting these classes for over 35 years. We offer three different class levels. We have beginner, intermediate, and advanced. We provide ASL activities for children's five through 12. And we are looking into providing classes for younger children as well. Our goal is to immerse our learners in ASL and deaf culture. We are proud to be able to provide support from instructors who are deaf as it is important to learn ASL from native language users. Deaf and hard of hearing children who already know ASL are welcome to participate in these activities as well. During these activities, they can socialize and teach their siblings and friends. ASL classes will enrich the experience of any child or adult who joins us. Due to COVID, we unfortunately had to place our family sign language classes on hold this year. Thankfully, we were able to partner with the Holly Institute to offer a program that was specifically designed for our BHS families. This 10-week course was provided virtually through Zoom. We are so thankful that we were able to still offer ASL instruction opportunities to our families. That being said, we're excited to bring the classes back to Bloomfield Hills next year. Trevor and I are going to work together to make sure that the district can provide our family sign language classes directly, either virtually or in person. We have really missed seeing everyone and hope to see you all in the 2021-2022 school year. I want to end by saying how proud I am to be a part of the Bloomfield Hills DHH family. Everyone has worked so hard this year to make sure that all of our students were supported. This wasn't an easy year, but as a team, we navigated it successfully. Thank you so much for your continued support and advocacy for our students. We would love to see you visit one of our classrooms next year. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Okay. And that last section, when she said, you're welcome to join us, I would love if any of the people here on the board would like to come to see our program, to meet our staff, you are more than welcome to, please feel free to reach out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from my colleagues?
We still got more.
Oh, we still have it?
Yes. There's some really good items still to talk.
So yeah, we told you it was long, we warned you in advance. So the next slide is about our Student Equity Council and we had hoped to have some students here, but unfortunately, just tonight, tonight just didn't work out. So many of you know that there's a group of students that meet weekly and I meet with them along with Jessica LePone as well, Tuesday evenings. And we've been doing that since June, every week. All students are welcome. And it really is a completely student-led group. They are the group that worked on the resolution to eradicate racism that was passed by this board over the summer. They presented at Kevin Song Conference on suicide prevention and they've also led professional learning for all of the high school staff this year. In addition, after leading that professional learning, one of the big goals was to create some support coming out of that for things that kids didn't want to just talk about their experiences without offering guidance and support to teachers and what they want for their learning environment. And so they created teaching guides for all of the staff that are going to be, they're big, the principals are distributing them in different ways. They're going to be going over them in staff meetings, professional learning. So I really could not be more proud of this group of students and just really honestly thankful to be able to work with them. And we have more coming. I'm excited. There are five students that are going to be taking independent study with me next year to be able to focus on equity work because they're already putting in such a tremendous amount of time that we were able to work it out during the school day next year is really exciting. Next slide. So you don't need to be able to read these things. Don't worry about that, that's not the point. But I just wanted to give a little update on global education teams. So as you know, we try to have one big project every year. So last year, our big project was the cultural observances calendar, which is still being updated. We did create a Bloomfield Hills global ed Twitter. So if you don't follow that account, please start. All of the cultural observances are something that we tweet out about. So there's stuff coming out almost every day. So that's really exciting and every building is working on plans for how to lift up these different observances within their buildings, which is really exciting. This year, we have taken on this project of the language of equity. So we're working collaboratively with the district team and also the individual building teams to start to talk about what kind of language really represents where our hearts are and all of the work that we've been doing. So we're excited about that. You should see, we have a meeting coming up next week, so you'll see hopefully a good draft before we leave for summer. Next slide. So just wanted to give also a quick update, oh, go back one. Thank you. The math equity challenge. So just a reminder that the, our challenge is that black students are having experiences that lead to disproportionate outcomes in mathematics and disproportionate enrollment in AP and IB mathematics courses. Next slide. So we have gone through a liberatory design process aligned with our continuous improvement process. So we're excited that we kind of went into this before the new MyKIP system and I'm still learning a lot about it, but Carrie and Susan are kind of helping me to see how the liberatory design process fits into that, which I'm excited about. So we started by building a data story and finding root causes of what has been happening. And so we did that through, we did that through one-on-one interviews with students in addition to focus panels with students to really kind of get into what are the experiences that we need to change in order for, to have improvement in our mathematics. Next slide. So based on that, I didn't put all the details of the analysis in here, but I wanted to show you the goals that we've landed on because this is what we're going to be working on over the next year, at least probably a little bit longer. So we had all of the teachers, six, 12, look at the data from the students. So we spoke to about 125 students and break that down into what we saw as three different goal areas. So students that do not feel successful in mathematics are noting that they do not feel safe to make mistakes in their mathematics classroom. The students that do not feel successful in mathematics are noting that they do not feel safe to ask questions. And then students are having inconsistent experiences with regards to relationships with teachers and there is a correlation in the data between a relationship with a teacher and a feeling of success. So these are the three things that we really want to focus on. Next slide. So we turn those into goals. So these are our goals. The first goal is about Algebra I because we know that in order to impact our AP/IB enrollment in 11th and 12th grade, that we need to start with Algebra I in 8th grade. So the goal is that by the end of next year, the 7th grade students entering Algebra I courses will be more representative of the overall 8th grade racial makeup. Based on the fact that students were feeling like they couldn't make mistakes, the next goal is by the end of the 2021-2022 school year, perception data would show an increase in students indicating that their mathematics learning environment promotes and encourages multiple attempts and productive struggle. Based on the fact that students said that they didn't feel comfortable asking questions, our goal is that in the, in the next school year, classroom observations will show an increase in student-to-student problem-solving-based conversations. And then for the relationship piece, we're focusing on feedback. So teachers will engage in multiple professional learning experiences and gain a shared understanding around strength-based feedback demonstrated by the end of the 2021 school year through teacher-created guiding statements and strategies. Next slide. So we've provided, it's not an all-inclusive list, but these are a number of the professional learning experiences that have been provided for staff.
both general education and special education staff, both this school year and what we're learning to move into, into our next school year. A lot of these, again, are very collaborative, that Margaret and I are working on together, and we're really focusing, again, on those inclusive and equitable practices, and you'll see many of the professional learning opportunities that are being presented here all focus around those areas and strategies to really bring that socially inclusive environment district-wide. Next slide. So, this is our future vision for our continued collaboration. Again, we're looking to add the full-time social workers to each building that will help support both our one-on-one small groups and our classroom SEL. Growing the therapy dog program to make sure that we're working towards having a dog in every building. Collaboration with the instructional coaches will be supporting inclusion and belonging for all students, growing the peer-to-peer program, the continued focus on equity and inclusion, specifically as it relates to the bond design and more, and then the continued inclusion of all math classes and the math equity, including our self-contained math classes. And there's more to come, these, these are, is not all-inclusive, but just to give you an overview of the work that we're doing collaboratively going forward. And I think that's our last slide, so before we jump into any questions, Margaret and I really just want to give a huge thank you to the board in supporting our work, our peers and the cabinet, and our building administrators, but most importantly, our staff. The work that we're embarking on, we could not do without them, they're amazing, and although some of these changes are a little scary for some, I think overall, there is an underlying sense of excitement, and I think we share that excitement.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, I just echo what Jennifer said, we're so, so thankful for staff, and as Superintendent Watson said earlier, you know, we keep asking more of them and they keep meeting and exceeding everything that we could ever ask for, so we're just really grateful. Now you can ask questions.
With that, I'll see if anyone virtually has any questions. Okay, Jennifer?
Daisy can stay with me when her owners are away, or her, her, what do you call them?
There's an application process that you can certainly fill out.
For the, application for the pet sitters? Get out of here.
There's going to be a long waitlist.
Okay, all right, we got Lisa?
Thank you, that was a great presentation and just really moving. One of the things I wrote down, and I've actually been wondering throughout the process of the math equity project kind of unfolding, when I first got on the board, we had a lengthy discussion about the math program and teacher recommendations about which math class to go into, which starts basically in 7th grade, because at 8th grade, then there's the differentiation between honors. And at that time, which was just a couple, less than a couple of years ago, the philosophy was that students would be encouraged to go into a math class that they would be able to handle through a number of different, four, I think, different indicators, and if they couldn't handle it, they were encouraged to not go into that because of the correlation to the amount of tutors and number of tutors and dollars spent on tutors. That sounds like a huge shift from what the philosophy is now.
Yeah, we have, we have shifted the process for, particularly for getting into Algebra I or Math 8 in 8th grade, because that, we, that is where we start to differentiate classes. We are putting the decision in the hands of the families. We are still providing all of the information that we had used previously for us to make a recommendation, so making sure that the families have as much information as possible to make an informed decision and to tell, like, explain to them what kind of the ramifications or what, what their decision means, but we, we really believe that that decision should lie with the families and, and not necessarily teachers telling students what they can or cannot handle, not that I think that's, you know, teachers are, they care so much and they want to make the right decision because they want kids to be successful, but we're hopeful that, that students will feel empowered to make the decision, students and families will feel empowered to make the decision that's best for them.
Okay, so, a couple of real quick follow-up questions. Are teachers no longer giving recommendations or only when asked for one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, they will not be giving formal recommendations, but they will be absolutely be having conversations with families, but they will not give formal.
If I go to conferences, I can, I can have a conversation, but I'm not going to get a recommendation unless I specifically ask for one. If I say to a teacher, what math class do you recommend? Otherwise, I'm not going to get a recommendation.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And, that's interesting. Third question, if they do decide, if it's up to the family and student, and they decide, okay, this is going to be challenging, but I'm up for it and I want to do this, what additional resources are we providing if they do find it challenging and struggle?
Yeah, so we have actually talked about that quite a bit, because we, we hope that students are willing to take on something that might be challenging. We're letting our families know about, we have, again, the summer program, I can't remember exactly what it's called, but like, Getting Ready for Algebra, something, something along those lines, and so that is an option for our students who want to kind of jump into that, so it would be great pre-teaching for them to take that course. Emily Handy is also working with some of the 7th and 8th grade teachers on putting together some packets that can also help students prepare. We're also hoping, we're looking at the possibility of offering our own tutoring for our math students to alleviate some of, some of that, particularly while we transition in this new process. So, we are trying to put a lot of support in place to make sure that we are wrapping our arms around every kid that wants to, that wants to take that challenge on.
All right, and I just want to pass on a little tiny bit of feedback from the high school. The math extension program, genius, thank you for that.
Well, that, and that is, that is staying, yes, that is staying.
Because they're getting the help they need during the day, and they don't have to, you know, so there's zero expense, and they don't have to carve out time at the end of the day for extra tutoring, and if they're already, so, you know, those things are really innovative, but I love to hear stuff like that, which can be incorporated into their, their school day, and you know, it's zero time and zero expense burden on families and students.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's all.
Howard?
I have a number of questions, I have, I have a number of questions, I'll ask a few and then see whether anyone else wants to come in and do a second round. First off, I was just blown away. This was tremendous, this is great, we're breaking paradigms and doing very novel and innovative things, props to everybody. Integrating the special education program into the buildings, I mean, everyone knows the, the history, not everyone, but to refresh everyone in the history, all of our buildings were built in the 50s and 60s, before IDEA even existed from a national, now Michigan, I think, had it from the late 7, the late 60s, but, you know, IDEA was 1974, 1975, I believe. So, all of our special education has been retrofitted into our buildings. So, using this opportunity of our bond to try to totally integrate the special education program into it so that it was designed in and not an add-on is, is tremendous, so thank you, thank you, thank you. You're moving to level, to level 1 to 5. Where does that put us with our peers? Are we leading the pack, or are we way, way behind and trying to catch up, or, you know, we, as novices, or not novices, we're not informed, we don't know how special education programs in this level work in, in different districts around the state and around the country. So, moving to this level, is this just kind of playing catch-up where we could have, should have been? Or is this kind of being a benchmark type of district?
I would definitely say it will be a benchmark. There are districts within Oakland County who utilize the Level program, but they're also operating cross-categorical classrooms at the same time. So, they may have an ASD classroom, or an EI classroom, or a CI classroom, and then also operating a Level. Nobody has gone to a straight Level system, and nobody's done it without categorical labels. Most of them are still labeling their programs as a Level 4 ASD classroom, and we're not doing that. I can tell you a comment from a staff member just today, who came to us from another district, that said, "This is unbelievable, because people have talked about doing something like this for years and years and years, and get excited people, because now we're doing it." Maureen Ziegler, who many of you know we're working with, she's worked with districts around the state and even districts in other states across the US, and she has indicated more than once that this is really groundbreaking, what we're looking to embark on, so we're very excited.
Would you say this is leading edge or bleeding edge, in terms of, is this something that's so innovative that we don't have any other peers to, to emulate and exemplars? And therefore, we literally are trying to figure it out ourselves, or are there other benchmark districts that we can exemplar districts, we can use as examples, so that we don't fall into the same, you know, problems or issues that they might have experienced as they went through this themselves?
I can't really name other districts that are, again, using the Straight Level program. I know Clarkston has done a lot of work with the Level programs before and continues to work with them, again, still offering the categorical classrooms. I'm not sure other states utilize the Level, because that's strictly from our Oakland ISD plan. And so, I, you know, to, to be able to say that other, other districts in other states are utilizing something like that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have that knowledge.
And then the final piece of that, and I'll defer to my counterparts and then come back to me, is by moving to this, and I know the IDEA funding and special education funding has its own little world, but is this, how does this factor in, I'm sorry to say, coming from the dollars and cents side, but is this going to cost additional funds, and if so, how much, or is it going to save money, or is it cost-neutral? Where do you think, over the next two to three years, this is going to end up?
The programs themselves should not cost any additional dollars to the district. We're, you know, we're, we're shifting, is what we're doing. But in terms of staffing, yes, we are definitely increasing our staffing, not necessarily, I mean, some teachers, as you can see, we're adding the two Level 4 classrooms this fall, and so there will be a cost associated with the staff that we're staffing those classrooms with. And then, of course, the coaches that we spoke of this evening and the additional social work support.
So, that's something that, obviously, you're working with Ms. Kostick on that, so that as we start reviewing the budget numbers for 2021, or 22 fiscal year, and then going into our forecast into the future, it would be lovely if we can understand what those costs really are, so that, as we're doing our strategic plan and trying to link our goals with, with our, our spending, just understanding how that all factors in.
Yep, absolutely. Now, Tina, I've been, I've had numerous conversations with her, so she is also aware of the direction we're moving in and very supportive. And, you know, there, there will be some kind of balancing out or cost savings as we begin to bring students back from center programs to the extent that we're able as well.
And again, this gets complicated, because some of this might be reimbursable from the county or from the state, and how that all works out, Tina's going to have to walk us through that.
She is the magician, I will leave that to her.
So, I have more questions, I'll defer to my counterparts. Okay, very good. So, let's see. Okay, on the math equity challenge, I had never noticed before that you specifically call out black students. What about economically disadvantaged students?
Well, the, the math equity challenge came about through our work with National Equity Project, and we were tasked to pick one specific group to look at. So, we believe that, and our black students currently, the outcomes for our black students are what we need to work on the most. And so, we believe that by doing that, we will increase the learning environment and better the experiences for all of our students, but we specifically, in this challenge, with our work with National Equity Project, we're only choosing one group to look at.
So, as we, as trustee Matlow talked about, we're working on setting up goals
Yes.
through the strategic plan, and obviously, there's a crossover between economically disadvantaged and black, and we're not, I would love to see the data in terms of how many black are economically disadvantaged and how many are not, but love to see, as we're moving into the next year, how those two relate, and because we have a very similar challenge on economically disadvantaged as we do with, with black students. So, something that I'd love to continue our discussion over the next number of months. At one point, I think someone, I forgot who now, talked about tutoring.
I think I mentioned it.
Okay. When we talk about tutoring, is that MTSS Level 2 assistance? Or is that actual what this district basically normally talks about with tutoring, which is on a fee-for-service basis?
We are still in infancy of talking about that program, but it's something that we've been talking about coming out of COVID, and particularly knowing that our focus is on math, that it would be something that we would offer at school, but honestly, haven't worked out, that we're still in the process of looking at the details.
How the instructor, the teacher, whoever is compensated for those hours, and is it part of the school day? Is it part of the union contract, or is it incremental and therefore over and above, and therefore it has to get compensated through the parent or through possibly the foundation or other things like?
Yeah, we're not looking at something that parents would pay for, this would be something that would be free for families. Yes, that we know, we're still working out the logistics.
But that's, when, when we talk tutoring, we think about the kids sitting in the library around the table with a tutor and paying 75 or 100, whatever it is, dollars an hour.
Right, yeah, we are, whatever we would put forth would not be something that would be a cost to families.
So, there's be something like salary enrichment or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it would, it might look like a traditional one-on-one tutoring, it's just something that we would be providing rather than asking people to go outside.
I've been asking for that for years, not only in math, but in ELA, and think, wonderful. The final thing is, oh. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the work you did with us on Tuesday night. Just so everyone knows, Ms. Schultz volunteered her time after hours to talk to the Oakland County School Board Association, and trustee Efros and I were participating in that, and she was one of the key speakers in our, in our two-hour session, so thank you very much. She gave us two articles that were very thought-provoking. One of them was Avoiding Racial Equity Detours, and the other one is Beware of Equity Traps and Tropes. And after Margaret introduced it to us, she didn't say a word after that. You're a terrible facilitator, because everyone just sort of took.
I think that means I'm an excellent facilitator, Howard.
Exactly, touche. So, I mean, everyone just took off, and at the end, Margaret said, hey, remember me? Okay, you've done a great job, I'm out of here. So, anyway, I think that taking that type of conversation, which obviously was with 30 or 40 people and, you know, in lots of different districts, at lots of different places, having that kind of conversation facilitated by you or whoever you think would be appropriate with our group here, I think would be tremendous.
Will you send us all the articles?
Absolutely, yeah, I'll put that in the board update.
Any more questions, Howard? Anyone else have any questions?
That's it, I got it.
That wasn't, that wasn't that many, Howard, you're good.
That was good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, so much, well done. With that, we're going to take probably a five to 10-minute break. We'll be back at, let's just say, 9:22? Okay. All right, I'm going to call back the order to the meeting. Yep, and then, who's going to present? Catchman area?
I'll get it started.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, they were virtual.
Who gave us this?
Rebecca put it together.
I came down specially because I had to get my name tags, because I went to a Chamber of Commerce meeting today and then didn't have any more name tags.
Listen, if, if the people in this state don't know who you are, I know.
All right, I'll, I'll jump in here, I, I know that Todd is, I believe, in the room. I can't see him, but...
He's in the room, Rob.
Okay, there we go.
Sorry about that, Rob, I was looking for a few people out in the hall. I think we have everybody, though. Mr. Cohen, do you want me to go ahead and get started, or do you want to wait just another minute?
We can start now.
Okay. Well, you know, before we start on catchment areas, I just, really quickly, you know, the emotional welfare of our students, connectedness, literacy, mathematics, those are some of the top priorities as we launched into this school year. And I think tonight, you know, we heard some great examples of how we maintain those priorities. And I was just in a couple of classrooms yesterday, had a chance to speak to some of our teachers that are really enthusiastic about the progress that our children are making this year. And in addition to that, while all that's taken place to stay future-focused, such as the strategic layout that you just saw for special education, to be able to stay focused in those areas where we're not only concentrating on this school year, but also looking out beyond this school year, has been absolutely amazing. And I couldn't be more proud of our teachers this year. So we are going to switch gears, just briefly, getting back to being future-focused, because as you know, we are reconstructing many of our buildings, K8. And part of that, the scope and design work that came through, also meant that we were going to have to take a look at our catchment areas so that we're populating those buildings in an appropriate way, that we can balance the district simultaneously as we reconfigure our K8 facilities. So that's what we're here to do tonight, is just to bring you up to speed. Some of this information is going to be familiar to you because we've presented in FFLA and BIC. There may be a few more details on here, but largely what we're going to do is go through the information that we've been delivering to PTOs. So over the last several weeks, we've been meeting with PTOs, collecting a little bit of feedback. And I think we just have a couple more buildings to go, and then we'll have had a chance to connect with all the PTOs by then, and then we'll take a look at next steps moving forward. So here with me tonight, we have Paul Wills, Rob Direka, two gentlemen that you are very familiar with. And they're going to get us going through some of the information that we've been presenting to the PTOs, as well as talk about some of the next steps. So Rob and Paul, if you can hear me, I was able to hear you. You can go ahead and jump into that first slide. David, we're probably ready for that slideshow.
All right, well, hey, thank you, Board of Education, for having us here tonight. And this has been some exciting work. I know it's one of the byproducts of a bond, and our PTOs that we've been meeting with have good questions and so forth. And we'll get into it. We'll show you our agenda that we've shared with them and some of the work that's happened so far. So on this slide here, as you can see, a big chunk of this is really kind of setting the stage for our community about where we are right now, what's happened with the process thus far, and kind of giving them a current state and a look at our future state, as well as how that fits in with enrollment, with projections and so forth. It's been a pleasure working with both Todd and with Paul. And Paul brings in the Moran Crusoe viewpoint that we've known for a long time on enrollment, which is very helpful. So at any rate, setting that stage, we have the current middle schools of two that are organized 4th through 8th grade and one that houses 5th through 8th grade. And we're, you know, and as we're sharing with our PTOs, you know, by fall of '23, you know, we'll remain two 4-element, we'll still have four elementary schools, and we'll have two middle schools. So we talk a little bit about where the sites are, current Loster site for North Hills and obviously the DHMS site for South Hills. And then also, we talk about how the elementaries will be right-sized and reflective of, you know, not only equity to inclusion, but in a very meaningful way, aligned curriculums and so forth. So with that, we also are emphasizing that no decision's been made. It's not, you know, going to be, the recommendation will come to the board in the fall of 2021. But from a process standpoint, as we move to the next slide, I think it was very important, process-wise, that early on, April 5th, we had our first meeting, and we did that with Superintendent Watson, his cabinet, and we included our transportation. We also included enrollment. Margaret was there, and as Howard alluded to earlier, and hearing Margaret and Jen and their team present, it was great to hear all the great things that are happening in special ed. But also, when we're doing work that encompasses catchment areas, we wanted to make sure that we had guiding principles to move forward with that work. And our board members that were there as well, you can see some of the statements in here are reflective there. If you look at the top of this graphic, I think the one thing that really, you know, it stands out to honor choices, has been a question that we've been receiving, we'll get into that in a little bit, but a collective identity. The beauty of this is that we'll have a 4-2-1 organization, and we're all moving to be Blackhawks at the end of that race, you know? And having gone through melding two high schools and two identities in my previous life, that collective identity as a community is so important. And then, as you go clockwise around this, you know, we will have an opportunity to look at future catchment areas every three to five years as one of the principles that were put in place from the meeting with Superintendent and his cabinet, as well as the players from the elementary and middle school buildings and so forth, who were in that meeting. But again, we're committed to equal-sized enrollment for all four elementaries, shooting for a number of about 550, and two middle schools that reflect speciable demographics with proximity to neighborhood schools. And I think that was really a great conversation that we had internally with Margaret, with enrollment. And it's not moving folks around by demographic, it's providing equal access and opportunity for students in the neighborhood schools where they live. And then the last one here is, we're committed to looking through all decisions, again, with that equity, access and opportunity for all. So that kind of sets the parameters. And then, if we could move to the next slide, we spent our time with PTOs talking about demographics and trends and where we are with that. And that's where Paul has the expertise and has done a fabulous job sharing where we are with live births. So Paul, I'll hand it over to you right now.
Thanks, Rob. And again, a lot of board members have probably seen this presentation in terms of the births before. Some questions we get is, you know, what's happening with COVID? You know, sometimes there's a little satire, like, oh, my gosh, this, you know, social distancing, staying at home is going to have this huge baby boom. Actually, the Brookings Institute's been tracking it for the last year and a half, and they're actually projecting half a million less children being born the next year or two as a direct relation to COVID. And the birth rate still is continuing to fall. So for the first time since 1940, the number of births in Michigan is just about 100,000. And I think, as trustee Baron mentioned, you know, a lot of the schools in Bloomfield are built in the 1950s and 60s. In the middle of your screen there, it was really the height of the baby boomers in 1956, 57, 58. So again, the district's made the hard but right choice going from two high schools down to one. And obviously, through the support of the bond program, the community is going from this three high schools to two, and ultimately, you know, reinvesting at the elementary level. Next slide. So again, we've taken a look, we update this actually on a quarterly basis for Bloomfield Hills Schools. So we look at what's happening in the Polygon, what's happening in the county as a whole, as well as the state of Michigan. And thank you to Sandra and her group in the People Accounting Office. We know there was a slight decrease of enrollment at the kindergarten level, primarily due to COVID. And, you know, I think some of the numbers that we're hearing are stronger and kind of returning back to maybe pre-COVID dates going forward. So again, next slide. So part of the demographics we're looking at is the number of households, what's the age of the householder themselves. So the median age right now in Bloomfield, that boundary is roughly 61.4. So again, we're not going to see a lot of that 0-5 cohorts coming into the district, but really at that upper elementary, middle school and high school, which is going to allow the district to maintain level enrollment. The public versus private is relatively stayed the same. It's roughly 76.254% to the public and about 23.76% for private at the K12 level. We also pointed out at the PK level, there's a pretty good opportunity. Roughly 55% are choosing a tuition base. So again, as part of the bond looks at creating these PK centers with some of the other facilities, might be a good opportunity to really take a look at that target demographic and potentially pull these students into the district. One of the things we've found is, once kids are in the pipeline with the Bloomfield Hills Schools, they tend to stay for their K12 experiences. Next slide. So again, this is just the trends for the next five years. I mean, you can kind of see the 0-5 on the lower right-hand side. Again, about 100 student drop in the next five years. So we are starting to see that level off, and we'll explain why that is. You can see that next cohort, which is your current elementary, middle school, at 6-11, kind of in the middle, just over 100 student drop, about 200 student drop at the high school level, middle school level currently. So I think on the next slide, you'll kind of see why that is. Again, this is the birth rates in Oakland County, so these actually get audited by the Department of Human Health Services. And if you take a look at the year 2000 birth year, that was the highest in Oakland County really since 1990, just over 16,200 births. This past year, for the first time really, again, as I mentioned, since 1940, there's less than 13,000 births in Oakland County. And so this is going to have a pretty dramatic impact, not just to Bloomfield Hills Schools, but to districts around southeast Michigan. So again, you're looking at roughly 3,000 less births in a 10-year time period. So again, we take a look on the next slide. It's not just the straight births, but we're also taking a look at that geographic information system. Again, Bloomfield has, still has a very strong housing market. Interest rates are still historically low, so people are having an opportunity to move into the district themselves. Again, primarily at the middle school and high school levels, again, which is allowing the district to maintain level enrollment. So it's not just a straight cohort, but we are adjusting that enrollment demographic as we go forward. So the next slide. I don't expect you to read this too closely. Again, what it really is showing is that your capture rate over the last seven years, so that thick black line that you see in the middle of your slide there, everything to the left is historical. So again, this is audited by the Department of Education, and this is how you get your foundation allowance based on your fall and spring counts. So the district's been able to capture from 2.3%, almost to 3% in 2019, 2020. With COVID impact, again, that slipped about 2.67, 2.69%, about 0.2% drop. Again, we do see very strong growth at the grades 5th, 6th, 7th and 8th, kind of leading to 9th grade. So again, that's how the district's been maintaining its level enrollment of roughly 5,500 students going forward. It's next slide. So one of the analysis we take from your 5-year enrollment projections, really, what does it look like from a K5 configuration of 6, 8, 9, 12, knowing that in 2023, when the middle school programs are up on and running, you know, what does that look like? So roughly 2,200 students at that K5, which goes back to Mr. Direka's comment of roughly 550 students at the elementary schools, about 1,200 students at 6, 8, which is roughly 600 students at the middle school level, and of course, roughly 1,700 students at the high school level for the next 10 years. Next slide. Taking the same exact information, just putting it more in graphical format. So great job.
That's it.
Just creating this level enrollment for you going forward. Next slide. So as Mr. Direka said, we took a look at the existing boundary maps. So just to familiarize the PTOs and others with the catchment areas, Conant's kind of in the lower left-hand side of the screen. You've got Eastover up on the right-hand side. The far-left side in purple, you've got the Lone Pine. And then right in the middle, kind of west of Woodward, you've got the Way Elementary. And again, this is the current 2021 boundary map. And the next slide. We're working with transportation, really taking a look at where the concentration of students are currently. And again, looking at the trend models, not just for district-wide, but actually for each individual boundary level at the elementary level. One of the things you see here is the key right above that. So again, in the current configurations at Conant, there's about 411 students in the K4 currently in the facility. Eastover is about 436 students, kind of in the purple in the upper right. Way Elementary, just below 400 students in the yellow, kind of in the middle. And then you look at Lone Pine over in the far left in the purple-blue, if you will. But you can see the disparagement between the enrollment. So Lone Pine, just under 300 students. Eastover almost at 450 students. So again, looking at that of, how do you create, for instance, specials? You know, if you have a much smaller population, very much harder to have a in-house or in-building specials going forward versus traveling. So again, that's some of that educational equity that will come out of the bond. Again, having education drive construction. The next slide. So again, taking a look at 2023, once you take back to the K5, East Hills actually jumps up to 647 students. Again, a very, very large elementary school at that way, time point. Way Elementary goes up to about 489. Conant, about 500 students. And West Hills, just under 500 students. So as you can see, if the goal for 2023 is to have a balanced enrollment of roughly 550 students, the district's going to look at it east kind of west migration. So we've taken a really hard look at, what are those neighborhoods that are both sides of each of the boundary areas going forward? We're still in the preliminary phases of that in terms of getting that information from both transportation, as well as the demographic software that we use for that, looking at the number of students who's choosing public versus private, and really coming up with various options. So as Mr. Direka mentioned, we met with a lot of the PTOs. I think from further slide, you'll see some other dates of really coming up with options, which kind of align with your goals and objectives. The next slide. So we're the exact same at the middle school. So again, it's not just an elementary review, but really what happens at the middle school, knowing that you're going to go from three to two facilities. So again, we have the 2021 enrollment. Again, West Hills of 558. Now, keep in mind, this is grades 4 through 8. And then you've got East Hills, also grades 4 through 8 with roughly 597 students. And of course, Bloomfield Hills Middle School, grades 5, 8 with 753 students. So quite a significant difference between the three middle schools relative to enrollment. So the next slide. Again, as Mr. Direka mentioned, the goal is roughly 600 students at each middle school. So again, how does that elementary boundary ultimately feed up to the middle school programs themselves? So again, at the end of the day, it's not just a straight, you know, move this neighborhood here to here, but it's really coming up with areas A, B, C, D, or areas 1, 2, 3 and 4 for the various neighborhoods that kind of align each of the boundaries to give some flexibility of discussion. So I think one of the goals is, you know, looking at low-impact versus high-impact transitions. More importantly, what does this look like the next three to five years? Really to help set the district on a path of creating equal attendance and catchment going forward. So next slide. So turn it back over to Mr. Direka.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you to Todd. Todd has been able to be a part of these meetings as well, and some of our PTO meetings, still trying to balance his regular job as well. So I should have mentioned that earlier. At any rate, so far, it's an ongoing project, but we've prepared a, you know, so far, we've had a study at the enrollment projections. You know, the targets are established, the boundary maps and polyplots. We've worked with those some, but we've not, and we worked with our district leadership team to do some drafts of that. But our next, you know, our next big step really involve, and we presented to FFLA, BIC, Board of Ed tonight, obviously, and our PTOs and building administration. But moving forward, you know, the next big step is really our, we're going to finish with our PTOs. I think we have our last one actually May 11th. But it'll be fine, I mean, the way community will be seeing that as well. But prior to that, we are getting a community catchment area task force together. Right now, Rebecca has the invite list representative across the district, and we'll get into scenarios like Paul referenced of 1, 2 and 3, about this is how many kids live in this particular neighborhood. This is how far they'd be from their school. And we'll provide different options for them, catchment areas and so forth. And that would be an opportunity for them to provide feedback for us, and then we can take that to district leadership team for further development. Over the summer, we will also continue to survey our community. And then, after the first fall count, we'll present our findings and final recommendations to the Board of Ed. And that'll be coming from Mr. Watson, I'm sure he'll be the person presenting that. But at this point in time, it's important to note that with the PTOs that we have met and so forth, within your board package, you will have some of the initial comments that we've received from our PTO meetings. And the questions don't have to be answered right now, but they're going to be around the notion of, some of the feedback we've received would be, you know, who's impacted, what would be, what would be the process for transfer? And what would be, who would be grandfathered and those kind of things? So I mean, those are, those are part of the bigger discussion, but also some of the piece that we talked about with the actual guiding principles that are so important. some of the piece that we talked about with the the actual guiding principles that are so important are is that is that notion of having a collective identity, because our four elementaries are going to be right-sized, they're going to have common curriculums. And these kids will all matriculate eventually to be Blackhawks is the goal. So, you know, some of those early worries and so forth and peer groups and so and such are important, but that has been probably the out of the 15 comments we've received so far, hasn't been a ton of data, but that has been one of the areas that parents are concerned about. So I think that might be our last slide. Yes. All right. So we're ready for your questions.
Anyone virtual have questions first? Lisa?
President Cohen, do you recognize them or would you like us to?
No, I guess you can't hear me. I was going to the virtual people first. Lisa has some questions first.
Okay. Thank you. Rob, you, I watched a couple of the PTO meetings, and at the end, you did kind of answer my question, which was, what is the main concern? That's what I'm seeing, too. They want to know the catchment areas, parents want to know if the catchment areas will allow them to stay with the peers and friends that they've already made in their current school. So at the very end, you referenced grandfathering. Are we not? Are we not really talking about that concept yet? Or is that something that?
Yeah, we right now, we're not presenting that grandfathering is something that's an option. We've been saying that, you know, the district has halted their in-district transfers during COVID and will be revisiting. That's really where we've been with our PTOs.
All right. I mean, to the extent that we that we have plans and when, if, or when they become concrete in terms of that being one of the overreaching goals, grandfathering, I think it would relieve a lot of anxiety, because that's all the buzz that I'm hearing. It's what I'm hearing at all the PTO meetings, too. So, you know, in my mind, the sooner that we can use that word and explain it, the better. So.
Right. And your discussion while we, you know, as one of the folks who met on our leadership team on April 5, that was, that was a very important part of the conversation of how how transportation would be impacted and all. There's a lot of nuance there, because is it equitable if someone wants to be grandfathered, but they can't provide their own transportation because of work or whatever reason? So there's, there's, there's lots of detail to still be discussed, but that's something that we'll work through Todd with.
Right. And you and I remember way back when, well, you too, Paul, Will's, when we closed two elementary, when we consolidated two elementary schools and had to do that. And we learned by, you know, by example, by making a couple, couple of decisions that could be tweaked along the way, and one was transportation. So, you know, I suppose at the end of the day, when we see the number of students affected by transportation opting out of their catchment or being grandfathered out and taking that option, it turned out last time, it was very doable to offer that. So I know it's a matter of numbers, and I know it's a matter of time, and it's far into the future, but transportation notwithstanding, I still think even without transportation, the notion of grandfathering will still be comforting to parents who opt for that. So.
Yeah. So you don't want me to tell everybody we're just tearing the Band-Aid off, and that's the way it's going? No, we've not been doing that, Lisa.
I'm a rip the Band-Aid off kind of person, too, but you know, I think there's people that are worried about it. And if they know that that's an overreaching goal and that that's something we're all working on and that we agree on, it'll be a little sigh of relief, I think, for our elementary school parents. I don't know if middle schools is affected by the or will be, but, you know, you form deep attachments in elementary, and it's been tough on these kids being virtual. So the notion that we're working really hard to make sure that they can stay with their friends and that younger siblings can too.
Paul?
Paul, you're the one who answers questions. People raising hands. I don't know anymore.
You know, it's, I think, you know, Rob, we just kicked off the elementary design processes, kind of with French Associates this past week. So again, now that the middle schools are under design and construction documents are wrapped up, you know, it's really working with the elementary principals and saying, you know, what is the actual class counts and what does that look like in 2023? Again, just to have that information readily available for the Board of Education, for Superintendent Watson and his team. Because again, if you look at, you know, the perfect number of 550, you know, if it's a seven to 15 kid, let's say, request, you know, would that be able to accommodate? Because it may only be three or four kids per grade over a five or a six grades. So again, I do appreciate French Associates taking a really close look with Mr. Directa, again, and the principals to really start allocating spaces at each of the schools. So again, as Eastover becomes, or East Hills middle school becomes East Hills Elementary, and same thing with West Hills, we know the schools are a little bit larger in terms of being able to accommodate potentially more than 550. Again, looking at the additions at Wayne, Conant, you know, how does that also help some of those conversations? So again, a lot more detail to come forth. Again, a lot of great comments from the PTO, and I appreciate some of the board members listening on some of those, just to hear firsthand from some of the parents' concerns.
I have two questions. One, getting back to Paul, I guess your comment about private schools, the breakout, 76% go to public, 23. What has that trend been the last couple of years? Do you have that?
Actually, it's been right at 23%. If you remember in 2008, 9, 10, with the Great Recession, that number actually dropped about 21, 22%. About 2013, 2014, it actually went back to 23%. So it's actually held steady. So again, you know, sometimes you hear, hey, I'm going to the private schools, because, you know, schools are not in person, if you will. What's interesting is, you know, I don't know if you saw the Free Press article, you know, probably about six months ago, there's 53,000 missing kids in the state. Like, just kids aren't showing up. So they're not at the private schools, they're not at the public schools. So again, you know, how did that impact Bloomfield? I think you saw almost a quarter point drop at the kindergarten level. But if you take a look at that fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you guys, I mean, the district was very, very strong, being able to actually increase your enrollment from the previous year. So again, that, 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 that percentage has been pretty steady for the last five years.
Is that 23% last year's data, or is that this year's data?
That's actually this year's data. So it was 20, it was just under, just above 23.15% last year in 2019, 2020.
And Paul Will's, to speak to Paul Cohen's point there, if you could just take a minute to talk just a little bit about what we're seeing with the correlation of our preschool numbers and how that transfers into that private and to the, to the private slash public ratios, that there is a true opportunity there to, to move into some of those opportunities by making sure that we design really nice preschool spaces and making sure that we have that available. Do you want to talk about just what we're noticing in that data?
Yeah. So that's also, that's been something that's been pretty steady for the district, about 55, 56% choose a private or tuition-based PK. And then there's, you know, the just under 45% on the, on the public side. So again, we've seen with some other districts, Novi, Farmington, Troy, some others, they've built these PK centers, which are more than just two classrooms attached to an elementary school, but really creating, you know, a 10, 15 classroom, almost like you have at Fox Hills. I mean, Fox Hills has a waiting list. I know that because I have a nephew and a niece on the waiting list right now, and my brother and sister are very excited about, you know, the future of PK. And so again, can that be replicated somewhere else in the district to really answer that call for that PK education elementary? So again, the success of those other districts by creating those centers has really paid off long-term in the last three to four years after they've completed those capital programs.
So, so what we believe that we're noticing within that data is because once those relationships are formed in a private setting in that pre-K age range, that that's transferring into those numbers that you're seeing at the elementary in terms of how parents and families are choosing that, because they've become part of a school cohort at that point. And oftentimes, a lot of those pre-K programs, private might move into like a kindergarten or a lower elementary. So that's one of the areas that Paul is referencing in terms of what that opportunity might look like as we build out those facilities and make sure that we have adequate space. If there's a waiting list, that means, you know, we have families for that need pre-K going elsewhere.
And then my other questions separately, and then I see Michelle, you have a hand up. When we're talking about areas, catchment areas, are we focused on the areas surrounding, let's say, Conant and Way, where Lone Pine is obviously going to be in middle school south, east, east over that, you know, people on the east side are going to middle school north? Are we focused on, from, I guess, the transportation, the people that are right in the middle? Is that what the focus is on looking at it and then kind of dividing that as the area and not worrying about the outliers?
Actually, again, we've done is really start, let's say, between East Hills and, or I'm sorry, Eastover and Way. We literally came all the way up and down Woodward Avenue and said, okay, who's in this quadrant? So again, not creating islands or not creating peninsulas of neighborhoods. So I think if you go back to the boundary, one, two more. Yep, that, that one right there. You know, what you'll see, President Cohen, is, you know, kind of along Woodward, I'll call it just south of Long Lake, the Hunt Club, Kensington, there's just not a large concentration of students. So we talk about low-impact versus high-impact, you know, properties. So if you also kind of go west of Woodward, which is the diagonal yellow line right there, right around the Cranbrook, south of Long Lake, Von Row, there's also very minimal students. So again, if you're trying to say, I need to take 100 kids from the Way or from Eastover and kind of migrate that to the, to the west, if you will, what neighbors could that be? Is it just one neighborhood? Or maybe it's a series of smaller neighborhoods to get you that 50-count or 75-student count. So again, I think to Mr. Directa's point is, is not really coming up saying, here's the solution, but here's area 1, 2, 3, 4. Here's the various numbers within each of those boundaries. And we did it not just for the Way and Eastover, but also the Conant and Way, as well as the Way to Lone Pine and Lone Pine to the Conant. So again, it's, there's, there's probably eight or nine different variations, again, kind of from preliminary data points. Again, how do those really align up with, I think, the four guiding principles? That'll really be the question, I think, to the, for this 30-person steering committee, ultimately backed through community input into the board. So looking for those conversations.
Okay. Michelle, I think.
Yeah, I'm still here. So my question, I guess, is along the lines of what you were just, just had displayed, looking at the student locator slide that you had up with the middle schools, and is there a way for us to see that data broken down with the true middle school numbers and what that will look like, removing the fourth or fifth graders? Just because when I'm looking at this to get to 600 at each school, it will give me a better vision of what that really looks like, as opposed to looking at 1,500 students. And then that way, too, and looking at the movement from which areas for those numbers, and how we can actually see what you're kind of, you know, visualizing or stating about like, okay, we've got 50 students here, what does that look like? I think it would give me a better visual to see what true numbers are working with.
Yeah, actually, if you go to, I think, the next slide after this, kind of shows the South Hill. So what we did is we over, overimposed trustee southward the existing elementary feeder patterns. So again, Lone Pine and Conant would still go to South Hills Middle School. And again, North Hills would really be combined of the Way and, and Eastover kind of going forward. But you're right, that, this is where I think you get into some of the specifics of what's really happening along Franklin Road, what's happening along Telegraph and Woodward, looking at the various neighborhoods to really get to that 600-student count. So again, if you get the, if you get the elementary schools right, the South Hills and North Hills, actually, they work out right to 600 students, almost identical, almost perfectly. So again, we'll have that analysis for you as we go through this process the next several months here.
And then, which brings me to my, my last question is the 600 number. And I think one of the statements you made about, you know, possible growth, how do we get to the 600 being the goal? And like you said, what happens if we have 610 students?
Yeah. So the good news is when we look at your five-year projected enrollment, it's right around 1,200 students. Actually, it goes out to 2030. So it's almost like a nine-year enrollment projection. Again, because district is still, people are still able to move into the district, the population. What's interesting is if you look at BHMS right now, you know, my, I think that building holds like 800 kids. But again, how do you look at the academic programming for each of those? So as, as shown on this slide right now, BHMS has 753 students in it. So again, for future growth, I know when we're part of the master property planning, the conversation was, should we have one middle school? You know, with 1,200 kids. And I'll tell you, like, 1,200 kids at middle school, a lot of principals, and we'll tell you, that's a large middle school. Some districts do it. That's their solution. But I think the right solution was, let's get down to the two middle school cohort. That does allow for future growth for the next, not just five or 10 years, but for the next 15, 20, 30 years, if something does happen. So again, that was probably the right decision to have the two middle school cohort. And again, 600 was just based on 1,200 students the next, you know, five to 10 years divided by two. So.
Okay. So the various space, so that's, that's the part I really.
Absolutely. Yeah, that was a great question that a lot of parents brought up was, hey, are you guys cranking up class sizes to 35 kids in Camden? I'm like, no, actually, we're trying to maintain the existing classroom counts. And again, just look at it from an educational lens, not from a, you know, maximizing financial or operational efficiencies. So.
Thank you for that, Paul. Thank you.
Any other, Howard?
Two, two issues. First, on the preschool conversation you just had, I cannot be more enthusiastic with what you're talking about in terms of really focusing on our preschool program in this district. We just heard last night President Biden propose in the American Family Plan universal pre-K for three- and four-year-olds. Now, I should emphasize, and I forgot, universal high-quality preschool. Because preschool is not just daycare. High quality. And in Michigan, that's five stars. That is such an opportunity for any district, in our district in particular, not only from the academic side of really making this district look P-12 or even P-20, and not just K-12, and really change that paradigm as our, for our district. So we really are looking for a feeder from, from three-year-olds, four-year-olds, five-year-olds, all the way through 18-year-olds at a high-quality level, which our district does have, is so, so, so important, not only from an educational standpoint, but also from a financial standpoint. So amen, anything you guys need for really pushing that forward in the two preschool buildings that we are developing for 2023, 24 school year? You know, just let me know. I'll open up the pocketbook. Absolutely. My second point or second issue, please, everyone, give me some grace for what I'm about to say. I'm speaking as an elected official and my fiduciary responsibility as an elected official. As you know, I've been very involved with redistricting in the state of Michigan and gerrymandering and things like that. So I'm very knowledgeable about not only how states redistrict their legislative boundaries, but also I've gotten very knowledgeable, pretty knowledgeable about school districts and how they redistrict their boundaries. This country has had a history of using redistricting, whether in.
Howard, is this relevant to the catchment area discussion?
Yes, it is. And let me finish, sir. Redistricting in school districts has, by some districts in the country, used race to change boundaries. All I'm asking is, when you talk about demographics, we talk about student counts. As an elected official, when you provide to us in the fall the catchment areas, I would request that you show us not only the student counts, but also the racial makeup, just so we are, we are comfortable that there is a pretty even distribution of Black students between the four catchment areas. Because that is our responsibility to make sure that there has, that we are really taking race positively into account. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, we will go to F, Oakland County School Board Associate Update, Lisa. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right. I know. Sorry. The Oakland County School Board Association met, we meet, we still meet bi-weekly. met, we meet, we still meet bi-weekly, so we met a couple of times since our last board meeting. Some of the things that we shared, board members shared, were how each of us are addressing after end-of-year activities, graduations, celebrations, what we're offering in terms of summer school, how we're dealing with presently with quarantines, and by what measures we met, we determine quarantines, that kind of thing. I also had a chance, excuse me, to sit in on a couple of the committees, the GRC Committee, which is our, I always blank on this acronym. It's the Advocacy Committee, head guest Ellen Lipton of the State School Board, and she came-
Government Relations Committee, that was.
Oh, my government, really, thank you. I, I don't know, it's just the Jeep, anyway. She came and spoke to us, and we talked about standardized testing and a lot of other things at the state level. It was great. And then we, I sat in, now I'm going to be co-chairing the DEI Committee, and the guest speaker was Margaret Schultz. So Margaret did great. She did a presentation for us on equity and inclusion. And all of the, some of the principles, we really focused on the articles that Howard mentioned earlier, so I won't go into too much detail. I also, I know she shared them, I have them as well. They're excellent. And the last thing I want to say is, I presented to representatives of different school boards, a proclamation from Moms Demand Action in Every Town for Gun Safety. It's a joint, they're a joint grassroots organizations that focus on raising awareness for gun violence and prevention, obviously, and promoting gun control. And they did a proclamation recognizing, May is Gun Violence Awareness Month, but they are recognizing throughout all of Michigan, different days set aside, wear orange days. And I am really happy to report that, I think we might be up to 27 out of 20 districts in Oakland County that have adopted the proclamation, and raising awareness for gun violence, which post the start of COVID is an all-time record high, teen suicides are with, by use of guns are, it's staggering. So anyway, that's all I have. Any questions? Okay.
Jennifer, Oakland County Health Division update.
So the Oakland County Health Division, or Department, has been graciously meeting with school board members every other week for, for several months now, to give us information. So we met last night, it was great. As Superintendent Watson shared at the head of this meeting, this week, for the first time in several weeks, everything's going down, all age groups except 90-plus. The healthcare capacity strength is at or near capacity in the COVID wards, but what the epidemiologist shared with us is that that's the most lagging indicator, so this is expected to improve in the coming few weeks. They also said that ventilator capacity is more than fine. It's, it's not the same situation as we were facing a year ago. They shared that the health division may, is trying to set up a partnership with Walgreens and Oakland schools to utilize four schools in our, four high schools in our county, located at the four corners of the county, to host vaccine clinics for students who are 16 and older. They, we briefly discussed that the Ford Field Initiative is, is winding down. They shared with us some county statistics that we've had a million doses administered in this county. 70% of persons 65 and older have been fully vaccinated, 78% have had at least one of those shots. They all, regarding hospitalizations, they shared that the older population are less frequently hospitalized, and the ones that they are seeing hospitalized are ones that are not vaccinated. So they are feeling very good about the results of vaccination. Basically, 56%, so more than half of our county is vaccinated. 25.6% of 16-plus people have had at least one dose, so the teenagers are getting in and getting their shots. Johnson &amp; Johnson has been reapproved. Most of the shots that have been distributed in Oakland County are from Pfizer. The Save Your Spot list is basically caught up, meaning that everybody who has ever signed up on that list has been contacted and vaccinated. So they're, they say that they're getting 100 new Save Your Spot reservations every day, and they're basically matching those with appointments in real time. So that's really, really nice. And because of that, they're going to start walk-in events next week. And they're, and then they're going to start with small events targeted to areas of the county that have low vaccination rates, and they're going to try to utilize high schools for that. They've already had a clinic at Lake Orion High School and at Farmington High School. We briefly talked about what is involved with getting high school students who are still minors vaccinated, whether a parent has to physically be there or not. So we, we had a small discussion about whether electronic consent would be, and so they're, they're going to explore all of those things to make it as straightforward as possible for our young people to get vaccinated. If you call the health division, they will just make you a vaccine appointment. So if, for, for persons who don't necessarily want to use the Save Your Spot mechanism, you can just make a phone call. And then finally, they are waiting on emergency authorization from the government to have the Pfizer vaccine utilized for persons 12 and older. So they didn't have a lot of information about that, but it is certainly in the pipeline. And that's all I have to share.
Any questions? Nope. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. We will go to the Student Born Intern Committee Report. Michelle?
Thank you. So our committee met, and we, we discussed the format of the student board interns. And so one of the things we discussed was looking at leadership and skill development of the students that would be participating in this particular opportunity. We looked at how we can streamline some of the processes that are associated with participating in this venture as a board member, as well as a student participant. With that being said, Superintendent Watson was able to send out the applications for individuals on the week of May, April 12. He also provided a very, very nice personal message to the students, and those emails were sent out to students at the International Academy, as well as both the Hills High Schools, by those principals. The application deadline is set for May 3, which gives us significant, well, not significant, but enough time to meet our deadlines that were established for us. Currently, we're looking to have all the application processes and videos set up in a format to allow board members access, but at the same time, within regulations. We're looking at the week of April, May, sorry, May 3, for the applications to be due. Interviews will be held during the week of May 10. We also discussed, what we also have in our discussion during the week of May 17. There will be two board interns selected with five, up to five students would be believed to serve on the advisory committee, for those who are interested in watching tonight. All this information was provided to each applicant on the application. Therefore, every applicant can plan and prepare for all the dates that we are requiring of them. So they know the 10th, they know the 17th, it's the week of interviews. They also know the deadline, of course, is of May 3. And then we also would like to present those candidates to the board on, at the May 25 meeting, which is also on the application, for all students to mark those, those dates on their calendar. I think that's it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Any questions?
Any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Superintendent Evaluation Timeline and Next Steps.
Okay, my last one tonight. So we've all been in communication about this lately, so I just want to inform the community what our process is. This is an unusual year regarding superintendent evaluation, and that's solely because of the timeline of Superintendent Watson's start of tenure, which was immediately followed by the onset of COVID. Our, our normal schedules of, of, of both goal setting and evaluation were, were thrown out of whack by the emergency. So the upshot is, is that this year, we're having two evaluations, one in June for goals that were set prior to 2021, and then one in December, this December, for goals that we set in early 2021 that were passed, I believe, on February 1 of this year. This will be the only year that is like this in, in years hence. We will just be doing the one in, in December. We will be utilizing the superintendent evaluation tool formulated by the Michigan Association of School Boards, so MASB, and we are also going to have facilitation from an MASB advisor during the, the meetings. So most recently, after everybody's feedback, thank you very much, Superintendent Watson and Rebecca and I, we met on two occasions to solidify the list of artifacts, which are the items that serve as pieces of evidence that will be used for the evaluation. We have settled on 19 items that I, I shared with you guys earlier this week, chosen collectively by the team of eight. We are not tied to those same artifacts for December. We can have some the same, all different, doesn't, doesn't matter. So for our June evaluation coming up, we are, we're, that's going to occur on two different dates, June 10 and June 24. The artifacts will be delivered electronically to us a few days prior to that first meeting, so that we can look them over, as well as a self-evaluation performed by Superintendent Watson. So on the first meeting on the 10th, Superintendent Watson will present the artifacts and answer any questions that we bring to the table about them. And then two weeks later, on the 24th, we will fill out the evaluation rubric in a closed session, and then the final summary and results of the evaluation will be shared in an open meeting after that. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Yeah, Lisa?
Sorry, I don't, it's, it's not really about the superintendent evaluation, but great job, and thank you for organizing this. What a huge task. It doesn't look like it from the agenda, but it has, but I know. So thank you. The question is, I, I, I guess maybe for anyone, what happened to the, our student intern reports? I really love hearing our students speak. Were they not, why didn't they give a report for tonight?
Because we, we asked them, Lisa, if they had anything to report on, and they said no.
Really?
Really.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we will go to Board Business. Approval of Bowers Academy as a criteria-based school of choice program. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve Bowers Academy as a criterion-based schools of choice program as presented by administration, beginning with the 2021, 2022 school year. Oh, yeah, that's it.
Support? Discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Siva?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
I mean, yes, motion passes, 7-0. Congratulations. Board Business, B. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the following start time for the 2021, '22 school year. 7:55 a.m. for high school, ending at 2:50 p.m. 8:30 a.m. for the middle school, ending at 3:20 p.m. And 9:10 a.m. for the elementary school, ending at 4 p.m.
Do I have support? Anyone support it?
Support. Get here.
Support from Jonathan? Discussion? Lisa?
All right. So I, I, I have a couple of questions before the vote. The first, all right, the first one is to Pat. Pat, my question just is, this plan, do you like this plan? Do you think this is the best plan that we can come up with?
So, thank you, Trustee Efroz. I think this is the best plan for next year. And so that was the recommendation that was made to move forward with the plan, the green plan. Part of it is because we know that we can do this for next year. Does it mean that this is the end of the work, and this is the end of the road? No. But this is something that we can do next year, and we're confident we can do it.
Any other questions?
I, I have some more. Does anyone else have questions?
No. Jonathan has a question, then Siva. Jonathan, then Siva.
If we were to reject this plan today and ask for additional plans, would there be time to implement a different plan for the 2021, 2022 school year, or would we be stuck with the, the times that we have right now? I guess not stuck with, but would we just stick with the times that we have right now?
That would, that would be my recommendation, would be then to stick with it. As we look at the plans, based on where we're at with transportation, once you pick the start time of one building, or one level of the tier transportation, then you're looking at one school starting about 40 minutes before, and another school starting about 40 minutes after.
I guess my question is, if this plan were rejected today, in favor of going back to the drawing board, would there be enough time in order to implement a different, different plan for the following school year? Would we essentially have to put this off until the school year after that?
So the five that we presented at the last board meeting would still be doable at this point. It depends on what the plan is and whether or not it will be doable. The five that we presented at the last board meeting, the different colors, are all doable, even if this plan's voted down today.
Can I ask a follow-up to that question? So, but is, out of the five plans, what is the recommendation of the district? Which plan of those five?
The recommendation is for the green plan for the upcoming year.
Siva, you had a question? Jonathan, do you have any more questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Siva?
Yes, thank you, Paul. So Superintendent Watson, in addition to the challenges with transportation, what other constraints do we have that led us towards the green plan?
So we tried to look at a couple of different factors. We tried to look at parent feedback, student feedback, staff feedback, transportation, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation, and then looking at the information that was put forth from the task force, as far as exploring options to delay the start time at the high school, in a manner that would minimize impact of both the elementary and the middle school. So all five of those options that we presented before are viable. We're also looking at what potential options that we're going, and traffic impact, I mean, there's other things as well that we looked at. We're also looking at the possibility, once we consolidate to our two middle schools, of being able to go from three tiers of busing to two, because then we'll now have our K through five students in one building, which could be one run, and then the possibility of six through 12, based on enrollment numbers, as a second run.
Could you also touch on teacher preferences, or teachers' union preferences?
They were supportive of the green plan, and supportive of continuing conversations about additional options in the future.
Okay.
Howard, you have a question? Would you have a question?
Would I like to make an amendment, please? What I'd like to do is amend the proposal of the motion after the 9:10 a.m. for elementary, at the end of the motion, to say the following. The board further asks the superintendent to investigate moving to a high school start time of 8:30 a.m. in the 2023-2024 school year without moving any other cohort to the 7:30 time slot, or start time.
Okay, as long as you remember that, so you'd like to make an amendment?
I've got it written down. I can repeat it if you like. The board further asks the superintendent to investigate moving to a high school start time of 8:30 a.m. in the 2023-2024 school year without moving any other cohort to the 7:30 start time.
So, it's the green plan with that caveat, that we would...
It's the green, what it basically would do is, and it's basically what the superintendent just was saying, which is moving the 7:55 of the high school to 8:30, but not changing the middle school or the elementary school start time in the 2023-24 school year.
Investigate that.
To, we're asking the superintendent to investigate and to report back by, if we want to put a timeframe, I don't know what we want, to report back by a certain time, end of the year, a year from now, I don't know. But for right now, it's just to investigate. If we'd like to put a timeframe, I certainly would be amenable to that.
So, we have an amendment? Do we have a support for that amendment?
Just procedural question. Do we consider the amendment before voting on the original?
Yes.
Okay.
We can't hear you, Jennifer.
My question was, do we consider the amendment even before voting on the original language? And the answer is yes.
If we vote on, if we agree on the amendment, as a board?
Yeah.
Well, if someone seconds the amendment, then we have a discussion on the amendment. Does anyone second the amendment?
That's where we're at right now.
I want to second the amendment, but not if it says investigate. I would like the language to say, we'll implement a start time for high school no later than 8:30 in the 2023-2024 school year.
No later, or no earlier?
No, no earlier. I apologize if I misspoke.
And since we're in discussion, I think it should be seconded before discussion, but I'm not going to second it if we're not going to allow the superintendent to explore start times of all buildings. I'm not saying that he has to implement it, but that if we're getting a study done, then I think he should be free to investigate many different scenarios. I don't want to put limits on him.
All right, we have an amendment? Do we have a second?
All right, so let's...
Do we have an amendment? Do we have a second?
Can you read the amendment?
There's an amendment to the amendment. Is that where we're at right now?
No, I didn't, no. I did not propose an amendment. I was just saying that, why I don't support the amendment.
Why don't we do this, or think about this? Because it's going to get complicated. Why don't we see whether we can get this on the table as the amendment, and then have a little discussion, and then possibly do an amendment to the amendment, which is allowable? No, it's perfectly allowable.
Listen, we have, I'm just going to make a statement here. We've had seventeen-hour discussions on operating procedures, staying within protocol. Michelle Harmela, we have a consultant talking to us to try to, you know, stay within a process. You know, I get what we're allowed to do, and now we're doing amendments, amendments to amendments, amendments to amendments.
...within the parameters of protocol and of what parliamentary procedure dictates.
Absolutely. This is the way any legislative organization works. You do amendments, you do a proposed, a motion, then amendments, and then you can do an amendment on an amendment, but you can't do any further.
Yeah, and quite frankly, postponing this vote altogether would be my preference, because we're not ready to make this vote, I don't think. I would like to poll each board member and ask them, do you feel you have enough information to make this change for students? Because if this is a one-year change, one year, then we're going to make another change year two.
Point of order.
This is a lot of time changes.
Point of order. We're on, Howard, are we seconding your amendment?
All right, first, the point of order to what Lisa said is, if Lisa would like to make a motion to postpone this discussion to a time certain, that is perfectly within Robert's rules, and that takes precedence over the amendment process. So, if you think that we're not ready, make a motion to postpone this. We can then debate it, and we would then postpone it to another meeting. That's fine. Is that what you'd like to do?
Yeah, let me think about the wording of this for one second. I do want to postpone it. I would like to postpone the vote, but not the discussion part of it. So, let me think of how I would...
Postpone the vote, you postpone the discussion. So, if we're not going to talk about it, if it's postponed, everything is postponed.
Well, if I, I would like to make an amendment that we postpone the voting part, but that we do not postpone the discussion. Maybe we don't have it tonight, but before we leave, we come up with the date that we will vote. So, here's my, here's my...
Well, here, let me just try to clarify what I think I heard Michelle say, and what Lisa's saying. There is nothing wrong, right now, we're in board business. There is nothing wrong with, if we want to postpone the actual voting on this to a later time, but then we want to have general discussion, we amend the agenda, add a general discussion about start time planning, and we can then talk all we want, but we just wouldn't have a motion to vote on.
Right, that's what we want to do.
What I've heard from Superintendent Watson, and talking on behalf of the district, is that there are five plans they discussed that they were ready to potentially implement for the 21-22 school year. Their recommendation is the green plan. You know, so, if we don't, and this is just my, you know, if we don't vote in the green plan, and we delay the discussion, then that's their recommendation. What I'm hearing is, then we're not going to, we could have further discussion, but nothing's going to happen in the 21-22 school year.
No, I'm not hearing that. How are you hearing that?
We have not heard from the superintendent what the final date is, in terms of when a decision has to be made.
Yeah, same, exact same.
So, is, there's a motion on the floor, did the motion fail? Can we move, can we move to pass that point? Is the motion on the floor, has that failed?
Correct. Has the motion...
Right now, we don't have a second on the amendment.
We don't have a second on the amendment, correct.
You want to second the amendment, and then we...
We don't have a second on the amendment.
I'll second the amendment, and then I'm going to make a motion to postpone the vote and move the discussion of start times added, I suppose, to general discussion.
So, you have to make a motion to close discussion, you have to make a motion to close discussion on the current proposal that you just seconded.
All right, I am making a motion to postpone the vote on start times tonight.
And close the discussion on the proposal.
Do we have a second?
Are we going to get to discuss it or not, if this motion passes?
Has to be added as an agenda.
We would then add in the possibility, if there's enough people who want to actually postpone it, and we don't want to vote tonight, we can postpone it or table it to the next, you know, two weeks from now. But then we can amend, and saying, we want to have a general discussion, so we can open it up again, and we can talk about different options, and where do we want to go. But we wouldn't actually be voting on anything yet. But that's sort of predicated, though, on the superintendent, in terms of what is, when do we have to make a decision in order to make it implemented for 2021-22?
But I do have a question for Pat, for you. And maybe I misspoke. So, my interpretation is that...
We can't hear you.
There's a way to do it politely, to say that, just to let you know, Lisa.
Oh, excuse me, I can't hear you. I've said it 10 times tonight. So, it would be polite if you could use your microphone.
Okay, all right. So, Superintendent Watson, the recommendation from the district is the green plan, correct?
Correct.
So, if we pull that off the table and have further discussions, and it's not the green plan, you know, and it's not one of the five plans that we talked about, because your recommendation is the green plan, what are the chances of us getting a plan in place for the 21-22 school year?
Other than the five that were on there, it would be incredibly difficult to try to put something else together at this point that we can implement for next year. But the five that are on there are doable, and as far as the deadline, it'd be nice to let the community know by the end of May, because they'll need to make, depending on what plan it is, they could have to make, you know, decisions with their family, and what they need to do as far as daycare, or something like that.
So, we could table it, or postpone the discussion for one or two meetings, without hurting the implementation process of the superintendent?
We can also call as many meetings as we want to, to get this done.
As long as it's one of the five plans...
Absolutely. And realize, the amendment I just put in doesn't affect what we do in 2021-2022 whatsoever. It's purely looking to these...
I'm just trying to connect the dots. As long as it's one of the five plans, and out of the five plans, the district recommends the green plan. So, if we don't vote on the green plan, then we're just overriding what the districts prefer on plan by the end of May, otherwise, nothing will...
Again, the amendment doesn't change the green plan whatsoever.
Okay, that's fine.
All it does is adds on top for two years hence. That's all.
Okay, all right. So, right now, we didn't get a second for your amendment?
Well, no, Lisa seconded it, but then she put a motion on to postpone. For how long, Lisa?
Um, I don't have a timeframe on it, until I know how long it is before you have to decide between one and the five. I'd like to give us as much time to discuss and research as possible, without delaying for next year. So, I need guidance from Superintendent Watson as to when it would be the deadline to decide between the existing five plans, if we did delay this.
And I think he just said by the end...
I'm sorry, the end of May.
Yeah, it would be that, at some time before May, then.
Jonathan?
End of May.
So, just so we have on the same page, the motion is to postpone vote into the May meeting, or the May open study session?
Well, as Jennifer pointed out, to me, we can even make a new meeting if we have to.
I think that we have eight people we'd have to find schedules for, and we've already had complications with that.
Right, but it's, I'm saying, for purposes of the amendment, I'll leave the date open and say by the end of May. We can work the logistics out.
Exactly, but so, what I think Lisa's saying, if I know later than May 27...
We have, Jonathan's, hand up Jonathan, and then Seva?
So, we all had a meeting with Superintendent Watson about, honor about 10 days ago, where he discussed the green plan with us, and some reasons for why other plans wouldn't work due to collective bargaining and things of that nature. So, my question is, is, in a situation where we move an hour, is that off the table due to any factors? Or are they all on the table, and we can revisit this?
Superintendent Watson?
I guess the question's for Superintendent Watson.
So, we can revisit the five that, you know, that were presented before, but there might be some additional negotiations that could come up, depending on which one is selected.
So, they are possible, or we're not sure if they're possible? I was of the understanding that some of the plans were not possible, due from prior discussion, but...
Didn't we just say that the five are implementatable for September?
They are, but some of them would require some additional collaboration with the teachers' union as well.
And I would question why we were presented with plans that aren't implementatable. That seems sort of needlessly time-consuming and misleading.
Seva?
I think my question's been answered, but I think I have a question.
Okay, Michelle?
If we're going to discuss all the plans, I just want to make sure that they are all implementatable, so...
Yes, we have a new word.
And keep in mind, you know, we all received a letter right before we got to our last meeting as well. And so, one of the main factors we were also looking at was transportation, right, and having those three tiers. And so, that was a big part of the five plans as well, is making sure all would work within the transportation.
And again, and I thought you were referring to a different letter. We did get a letter from the union. I'm sorry, Michelle, you guys throw your hands up.
That's okay. I just, I know that this is something that, in our last meeting, we talked about, you all have been discussing for three years. I think that was the last comment, two, three years. I'm not sure what was presented to you all as options two, three years ago. But now, we've got a new set of options that were presented to us. Some of them had, were following the APA guidelines. I had a chance to go through and read several documents, and various research articles that would say that the research that was done by the APA did not take into consideration the effects on elementary school kids. The focus, and this was, I can forward you the article if you'd like to read them. One of them was actually by the APA, and what it did is it talked about the fact that the conversation was around supporting our high school students and what was needed. I see a great growth in my son. I'm not saying that we should not honor that as an option, but the article explicitly stated that these things were taken into consideration without the inclusion and thoughts of what it would do if you moved elementary school kids to an earlier start time. And that elementary school kids can also have backlash as relates to their academic performance, excessive absenteeism, and also bringing down the district's performance. I do not mind sharing this data and reports that were through the APA. You can go through, and you can search the articles that were provided by the same organization that we're saying. So, what I'm asking us to do is to take into consideration that the green plan does get us to a point where we can actually go through and see how we can bring our high school kids, students, to the 8:30 start time. One of the things that I learned in my conversation with Michelle Harmela is how are we looking at these things? Are we reacting based on, this is my heart because I did so much work on it, and that I'm not going to let this die? Or are we really thinking about what's best for the organization, and the district, and our students? The other thing that I read in these articles is the unnecessary stress that's placed on families financially, if they have to cover, even if it's an additional five hours of time out of their dollars to pay for their kids' daycare, and the extra time that child is now spending in a daycare setting. So, there are things that we need to make sure we're considering, as there is research out there that does say that these, the reports, although I strongly support it, I'm not saying I do not support the times for our high schools being moved closer to the 8:30, because I see my son's progress. I support it wholeheartedly, but not equity, we talked about equity, not at the expense of our elementary school students. And so, I'm just asking that if we look at what was proposed, one of the things that Superintendent Watson said is that he's going to try to get us to that point. And one of the things that we're learning, we're working on, Michelle Harmela, is trust, right? And so, I can trust that if right now, we say, okay, right now, we can move toward at least a compromise to get our students to, you know, have it a shorter time toward that 8:30, then I can support that. But to sit here and say, let's keep thinking about it for 20 more years and not vote on it, that's okay. Whatever you all decide to do, that's fine. But I will say here, and I will say, that if there's a time for elementary school students that puts them at 7:55, I'm going to let you know that I will vote no.
Lisa?
So, one of the things that was pointed out, tested in email, that I hadn't really thought of, but it got me, and we actually talked about this at the DEI meeting from Oakland County School Board Association, is the common misuse of equality and equity. And I'm really worried, as this email pointed out, that we're misusing these terms, because... And I'm really worried, as this email pointed out, that we're misusing these terms because all of the theme behind all of the initiatives we heard tonight was with an eye toward equity, not equality, but equity. And if we are purporting to do that as a district, and then a big opportunity to put that into practice comes along, and I'm going to give you an example, okay? Science says that adolescents in puberty have to shift sleep schedule. The most important hours for them are 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Elementary school students need collective number of hours, but the shifting to an earlier or later time is not as important because of their circadian rhythms. That's from the CDC. So you might have other research, and if you do, I'd like to see it, but that puts me in a position where I certainly can't vote tonight. When we had to prioritize phasing to come back to face-to-face, we prioritized elementary school students ahead of high school students. Did we all clamor around this not being equal? No, we recognized the needs of elementary school students to learn in person because it was more difficult for them to learn independently virtually. They needed more parental assistance. High school students were more independent and they could pick up virtual learning easier. So when we set a priority to phase back into in-person, we prioritized elementary ahead of high school. It wasn't about equal, it was about equitable. We knew they had special needs, and we knew that they had special considerations because of their age, and we recognized it, and we adjusted accordingly. I don't know how this is any different than that.
Lisa, you just used the word equal. And so I think that sometimes if a person misspeaks, it's okay to say, hey, you know, were you meaning to say equity or were you meaning to say equality?
What I mean, I think we're mistaking.
No, I'm not mistaking. I said equity. And so in order for us to have an equitable opportunity for all of our students, I'm using equitable. And so I'm not saying equal.
Right, and I'm saying, I think that, right, I think that, but I think in practice, what we're doing is applying the principle of equal.
No, I'm not saying. How is that, Lisa, how is that applying?
We want a uniform start time for everybody.
I didn't say that, Lisa. That was not my words. I never said that.
I know, and I'm not accusing you. I'm not accusing you.
But you used my words, Lisa. Let's have a real conversation.
I'm not accusing any specific board member of doing it. I'm saying the idea that high school students may have needs that are different because of their biology is the same idea that elementary might have needs that are different because of their age and independent learning ability. I don't know that we need to apply the same, you know, one group doesn't have to suffer just because another group benefits. And I really don't know the analysis, and I've heard it said, this is more from the last meeting, are we eliminating a problem but creating another problem? Why can't we just be doing something good for our students without creating another problem? One, eliminating a problem doesn't necessarily create another one.
All right, I see. Other hands up. Michelle, you can reply to that, then Howard, Siva, Jennifer.
I can respect your spacing, your opinion. I just want to say that as a black female, when I enter a room full of other females, we're all equal. However, am I treated equally? No. Am I treated with equity? Not all the time. So we can't always say that there is an opportunity because it's presented, it's always going to be equitable or equal. My statement regarding the elementary school students and the times that were not being considered was to present data, because we're saying science, the CDC, APA, we're saying science. And so I just wanted to go through and be able to provide information that would support the conversation and dialogue about supporting the science. And so when we say that one group has to, there's no win-lose, but there is always sometimes some sort of a loss. And so we look at the times that were presented, there is something or some space that's lost. So transportation, guess what? You've got to figure it out, right? So there is some sort of a give. So there's always going to be a give or take, and maybe not a win-lose, but there's always some sort of a give or take. And so it's like, I just, I just, I get what we're all saying, but at the same time, I still can follow the science that I have read, and I encourage everyone else. I've shared documents with other individuals that show, you know, start times not necessarily being something that's considered across our nation to move, but it's a great direction. I support this. I support moving our high school students, but I think the plan that Pat Watson has already presented to us and giving his team the chance to look at what we can be doing and what we can do in 2022 to move us closer to that schema, it seems more rational, at least to me. But thank you, I can ramble on and on, I apologize. It is late.
Howard, Siva, Jennifer, I get that right, hopefully.
After our last meeting. I thought a lot about this whole issue and then talked to Superintendent Watson extensively on that Friday and I think on the Monday after. We've got a set of paradigms in this district that we have three start times, as Superintendent Watson called them, three tiers. There's a 7 o'clock tier, an 8 o'clock tier, and a 9 o'clock tier. And when I say a tier, it's plus or minus, you know, within that hour timeframe. And the reason why we have three tiers is because we have buses that run three times through the neighborhoods. They run in elementary, they do a middle, and they do a high school run. And what we're talking about is moving the chairs around in terms of which goes at the 7:30, the 7 o'clock tier, the 8 o'clock tier, and the 9 o'clock tier. Nobody, none of the three cohorts wants to be in the 7:30 tier. AAP says that middle and high school should not be in the 7:30 tier. And we're hearing from the community and from other board members that there are reasons why not to send elementary school kids into school at 7:30. Okay. The green plan does none of that. The green plan has middle school students at 8:30, consistent with AAP. The elementary school kids move, I think, five minutes from 9:05 to 9:10, so they're not in the 7:30 tier. And the high school students move a half hour towards where we're trying to get them. So none of the three cohorts take a step backwards, and we're all moving forward towards what we want, which is 8:30 or beyond start times. So that's the green plan for the next six months from now. The amendment that was seconded, that I think we're talking about right now, says that the superintendent should investigate. We might modify that to the superintendent will move to. We can make it more of a demand instead of a request, that we can discuss. But what it says is that we move the high school to 8:30 without moving any other cohort to the 7:30 timeframe. So if we approve this amendment and then the motion underlying it, we will have a three-tier system for two years at 7:55, 8:30, and 9:10, and then in 2023, 2024, we likely will have or will demand, at the discretion of the board, a two-tier system of 8:30 and Who's got objections to that? And if so, what are those objections?
Are you asking that to the board then?
I'm asking that of the board. I mean, we've just spent a lot of time talking. By that proposal.
Okay, I'll say it.
What is the objection?
I'll tell you.
I'll tell you the objection. You can't make a guarantee on anything.
We can, look, we are guaranteeing that we, with the bond, we're guaranteeing we're going to have four elementaries and two middles as of September 2024. Why can't we either investigate or, I said investigate. If Jennifer and the board wants to say the superintendent will, that's our discretion. But all I said initially was investigate.
No, investigate's fine. I mean, the.
And that, well, that's the motion right now.
That hasn't been seconded.
But it wasn't seconded yet.
Yeah, Lisa seconded it.
Okay.
Oh, right.
All right. Do we have anything else on the table?
So if it's just investigate, what's the objection?
I don't have an objection.
Because we're the Board of Education, and we get to say what. And if we say what is 8:30 for high school, then that is within our purview. And if we don't deliver, let the good citizens of this district kick us out of office, okay? That's not on the superintendent.
I'm agreeing. Paul was the one who was saying we can't do a guarantee. I'm not disagreeing with you at all, but Paul said we can't guarantee.
That's my opinion. You know, I'm not comfortable.
Right, and I would say I seconded it for purposes of having the discussion, but I don't like the language being, I don't like the language being up in the air. And I want to also say, it's not three years, it was one year. We're revisiting at the end of this year, is my understanding. Because the motion, sorry, the recommendation, the original one from the superintendent was a one-year recommendation, not three years.
Huh? I lost that. This is saying for, we make a change for 21, 22, and then we either investigate or make a change for 23, 24. That's the.
22, 23, you missed a year.
22, 23, the superintendent says we can't make any change. It's not feasible until we get the new elementary, middle school structure. It's not feasible to make any changes in that middle.
Then why is his recommendation for only one year?
If we're going to two tiers.
If we're going to two tiers.
If you're keeping three tiers, you can shuffle it.
So we do have a motion, you know, an amendment. We have a second. We've had plenty of discussion.
No, we haven't. We have plenty, when we're done.
You know, Lisa, can you please be considerate?
No, because I don't feel you're considerate to me, Paul. Yesterday, you told me this plan sucks. That was your quote to me. Now you're saying you like it? That's confusing to me. Now I'm hard to think. That's disrespectful to me. I feel like I'm being played. I have a question, and the question is, we left the last meeting two weeks ago, and we couldn't even eliminate of the five options, we couldn't eliminate plans even to get down, narrow it down. I would like to know how we got from that point to this point with a recommendation. I was asked as a board member, as we all were, for feedback in the study session. We didn't even finish giving feedback, and then we got our recommendation. So I feel kind of like asking for feedback was for show because we didn't get a chance to finish giving it. I want to know what the recommendation from the district is based on, because we didn't even get done discussing it. There's 2.5 years of task force work that we didn't even touch upon. And by the way, the objective of the task force that was, your understanding should be least disruptive, that was never the objective. I haven't been writing, kept notes, and I haven't emailed.
Lisa, I really think your comments, the last couple of minutes, is totally inappropriate. A discussion that you called me last night at 9:30 when we were talking about it, and I said, and I made a comment to you for you to put out there in the public, totally inappropriate. Totally inappropriate. Completely inappropriate.
And I don't know who, I don't know what you mean.
Completely inappropriate, Lisa.
Order, please.
No, it's not. I'm asking you what you think.
Come on, guys.
Completely inappropriate.
Paul, I'm asking for your opinion, because you tell me one thing, you say something different in front of everybody else. I want to know what you think. Do you like this plan?
My opinion on this plan? It's the recommendation of the district. Could it be better? Of course it could be better, but it's the recommendation of the district.
No, I'm asking if you like it. Do you like it?
Well, why don't we answer that question if it comes to a vote, with our vote?
What is the question?
Well, Lisa posed an opinion question to Paul.
About which of the five?
Yeah.
Can I take that on?
Yeah, you can take that on.
Well, first of all, I remember clearly mentioning at the last board meeting that the only three feasible plans were the green plan, which Michelle had supported, and potentially the blue plan and the gold or the yellow plan. And I was not, I clearly mentioned in the board meeting, you can go chuck, that I was not in favor of the blue plan because it affected elementary students in daytime hours or, you know, winter hours. And my first preference was the green plan, which I echoed Michelle's, you know, Michelle's preference. And my second preference would be the gold plan, right? And I believe John supported that as well. So I think we.
Well, I did re-watch it.
So do you agree with what I said?
I agree 100% with what you said, but that was just you and Michelle who weighed in.
And John.
Russ didn't get an opportunity to.
And John.
I don't know that he did, but okay, let's say he did. That's still like three board members.
Let's ask John.
We all, we all talked.
Like three?
We all talked at the last meeting. We all talked at the last meeting. What didn't happen at the last meeting was a clear action step, but in between that meeting and this meeting, an action step materialized, which was a recommendation on the agenda. And I also wasn't sure how it got there, but if this is the administration's recommendation, then I think we honor it by moving on it in some fashion, by voting or tabling if we have a clear action plan. I don't feel the need to table. I know what I need to know to make this vote. And I'd like to remind everyone that we have a plan that satisfies the two biggest issues on the table, which is 8:30 for high school and not changing elementary. And that is the orange, gold, yellow plan. And I am strongly in favor of that plan, even though it doesn't service the medical recommendation for the middle schoolers, and that is not, that's the drawback of that plan. But I think it's the least of all evils, and that's what I said at the last.
Realize what's happened between last time and this time. Last time, when we had the five plans on the table, and we asked, I don't remember who asked, the superintendent, do you have a recommendation? And the answer was no. What's happened between now and then is the superintendent has said, I recommend the green plan, which then brought the green plan up to the top of the heap.
Exactly. And I'm sorry, Jonathan, you can go, then I'll take my opinion.
Sure. I'm just wondering, in what world are middle schoolers not in puberty? I don't, I mean, that's what we're going, like, we're saying adolescence, we're saying puberty, and then we're just saying, well, there is a plan. It's the one that has the middle schoolers going early. And I'm just kind of like.
It's true. It's true. So pick your poison, right? We have an elementary community that is adamant not to have any changes, and we have a scientific recommendation for middle schoolers, and as long as we have a three-tier bus system, those are the two evils in front of us. And we have to pick one. Or we don't have to pick one. But the green plan, if you wash one hand and not the other, if you throw a life rope halfway to a drowning person, that's your green plan, okay? It does not do what we need to do as a district. And I don't think we should waste our time doing something that doesn't get, it's not moving us in the right direction, it's simply not going in the right direction.
Can I ask the superintendent a question?
What?
Can we get a vote on the green plan?
We can get a vote. Well, first, we have the vote on Howard's and his second. We're in discussion. Now I'm calling a vote.
But can I just ask Superintendent, what quick question?
Yep.
Okay. So the green plan has high school 7:55, middle school 8:30, and then elementary 9:10. Can we flip-flop middle school and high school? So we put high school at 8:30 and middle school at 7:55?
Can you say that again, please?
Okay. Currently, green plan, high school 7:55, middle school 8:30. Okay?
Okay.
The original request of you back in February was to have high school, or at least the logic was, high school start time at 8:30. We subsequently learned that middle school and high school are coming out of AEP. So is it possible to just flip around? It's basically a modified yellow plan, which is a green plan, which is taking. It's basically a modified yellow plan, which is a green plan, which is taking 8:55 and put it to the middle school. So they get the half a loaf.
Seven.
7:55, thank you, thank you. So make the middle school, which was not our original objective, 7:55, which currently they're at, middle schools 8:15. So it pulls them earlier by 20 minutes. But then, if for 2023, '24, we move them to 8:30 with a two-tier system. Is that doable? And that might satisfy some of the high school demand or request that we have 8:30 start time for high school. We'll just, unfortunately, the middle school takes a little step backwards. I'm not, I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying, is that a possibility?
What about the lifeline that only goes half the way? You know, I don't know. But, I mean, I'm.
Look, can I just, can we, we gotta keep on one train here. Is that possible, Mr. Superintendent?
Potentially. I'd have to go back and flesh out the additional details and bring back more information. Potentially.
But is that maybe a compromise or something that you would agree to?
But, no, it's an interesting point. The logistical question is, we have one plan that says 7:45, 8:30, 9:10, and then we have another plan that says 7:55, 8:30, 9:10, right? So, so does, does, does that 7:45 really need to exist?
All right. Getting back, so we have Howard's motion with the amendment that we would have discussions. It was seconded by Lisa. I'm going to call for a vote on that, which is the green plan, which we're going to have future discussions.
Paul, I'm going to respectfully ask that you not call for a vote until we've finished discussion.
Well, who else, who else has any more discussion?
What, what would you like to say, Lisa?
I, I would like to say, it, it sounds like we have questions before we take a vote. I'd like to hear some of the answers. The, the one that Jennifer just posed. I, well, we, Superintendent Watson, a chance to answer it. Before I make a vote this big, I'd like to have some answers. I don't feel like I've had all my questions answered, so I feel like a vote would be rushed.
What are your questions?
My question is, Jennifer just asked one. It wasn't yet answered.
Jennifer, what's your?
Well, no, I was just rephrasing what Howard said is, could, could orange, could, could we have an orange order with a green time schedule?
Basically, just taking green and flip-flopping high school and middle school.
So the middle school will start at 7:55?
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the middle school, yes. Yeah, the middle school and the high school would start at 8:30.
High school started at 8:30. Potentially, yes. There'd be some additional conversations we would need to have with the teachers' union as well regarding a plan like that.
So we'd have the table of, I mean, okay.
Is that something that the board might be amenable to? So if, so in two weeks from now, if the superintendent can get that confirmation that that green flip-flop is doable, would the board be okay with approving the, the modified green plan with the amendment to say, and the superintendent will investigate, moving the middle school to 8:30 in a two-tier system in 2023, 2024 school year?
I, I personally have no idea because Pat needs to do a ton of research and come back to us.
So he needs, so, so both of those to-dos are Pat's. One is, is the modified green plan doable for 2021, '22? And is the superintendent comfortable with either investigating, moving to a two-tier, 8:30, 9:10 start time? Or would he be okay in two weeks to say, "I can, I don't know how to do it, but I will do that in two years hence"?
Here's my question.
Pardon?
Jonathan?
Here's my question. How are Lisa and Jennifer comfortable with that when the American Academy of Pediatrics has recommended that middle and high schools start at 8:30 or later? How can you be comfortable with the middle school starting early?
Excuse me. I never said I was. That was Jennifer. We're two different people.
I'm, I'm not saying that you.
You said, Lisa and Jennifer.
I said, how can you be?
I'm not.
Okay, there we go. That's my question. I didn't say that, you said that.
You said, how can you be?
Right.
Why didn't you ask, are you? Because I'm not.
And I can answer your question, John, for myself. In, in my heart and soul, I, I don't like it one bit. But as a public servant and hearing from every single angle of this issue, every way around, I, I feel that compromising on the seventh and eighth graders at this time results in the most good for the most young persons and young people in this community. And there's nothing I want more to get to two busing cohorts to change that. But at this time, I, I have come to the position where that is the most feasible strategy to maintain order and goodwill in this district.
Okay.
Howard.
We, this district has been talking about this issue for years, if not decades. We've gotten to the point of being able to get pretty far down the road for 2021, 2022. Is it perfect? No. But that's the art of, you know, the sausage making and compromise of any legislative process. We've got not only '21, '22 getting us, you know, to the 10-yard line, but we're not at a touchdown. But we can get the superintendent to say, "And yes, I will get you into the goal, into the end zone in 24 months from now." Guys, you can't have.
Right.
Yeah, don't let, don't let the perfectly, the enemy of the good.
Right.
It's called compromise.
All right, so.
Because, because we have constraints within the organization, either because the, the employees have some concerns, and because logistically, we don't have two middle schools yet. We will have that in 24 months. We have to give the superintendent some grace to get us from here to there.
Any other, Lisa?
All right. So I have a question of Pat before I can vote. Since we weren't privy, and last I heard, we had five plans on the table, how was it that you narrowed down and were, how, how did you arrive at the green as the recommendation? Can you take me briefly through the process of how you limited the other ones as the recommendation?
Right. One of the major goals was try to make sure that, again, we looked at the traffic information, we looked at staff feedback, we looked at student feedback, we looked at parent feedback, we looked at the American Academy of Pediatrics. You know, those are just some of the factors we looked at. While the green doesn't do everything, it does move it closer. High school, still not there. There's no argument, it doesn't meet the American Academy of Pediatrics. Middle school now does. Elementary now does. I would have no problems with the board saying, "You know what, Pat? If we go through green plan in fall of 2022, we want you to present an update that shows how we can get there where we can have both middle and high school potentially start at 8:30 and keep elementary at 9:10."
Okay, so you said it was factors like traffic and, you know, are, are those factors worse with the orange or blue plan? The, uh, traffic would be worse, uh, all the other factors you looked at? Because this is important to me. I, I don't, it's a leap. I don't know how we got from five down to one. I, I've seen nothing in writing. All I heard was this one-sentence proposal. It's too much of a leap. I didn't see any process part. And this has been the work of 2.5 years of a task force. So I, I, I think it would be very helpful for me to understand how. If this is your recommendation, Pat, I, I want to honor it. I really do. I just don't understand how we left two weeks ago with five plans and now we have one.
Seva.
Because we didn't get to see any of that. We didn't get to see any bit of the thought process, the narrowing down process. And I thought we were partners in this because at the study session, you asked for all of our opinion. And then I turn around and we have a recommendation, and I scratch my head going, how did we get here? Two and a half years, we didn't get this far in, in two weeks. So what did I miss? What went on that I missed? And I'd like to know and be part of it. This is an important thing to a lot of people. It, it's, uh, you know, I, I feel the work of a task force is completely undermined, completely, by just dismissing. Not one board member asked me what we talked about on the task force, what the objective of the task force was. This was a ton of hours in research done. So while I appreciate that John Googles during a meeting, great, I spent two and a half years doing research and building files this thick. It would be nice to have time to talk about it. That's all.
Seva.
I, I just want, I just want to say.
Oh, Michelle, then, Seva.
I, I just want to say, you know, when we, when we task, you know, a, a member of the team of eight, our, our superintendent to come back with an idea and a plan and present it to us, they couldn't, they didn't have to submit all five of them to us. That was a courtesy that I requested. They could have just came to us and said, "Here's the green plan." You would have never seen the other five plans.
But Howard asked him if he had a recommendation. And now.
Lisa, Lisa, no, 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 it's not your turn. Mute yourself and, and give my, give my space. Right now, it's my turn to respond. I respected your space. We're, we're going to practice some of the things we learned with Michelle Harmela tonight for all of us. Howard has been a great example tonight, and he is reminding me, and I keep reflecting what Howard said today. We are growing. So let's all try to make sure that we're respecting each other today, and let's kind of bring it down a little bit. So at the same time, the superintendent has answered the question, even if we don't like the response, it may not change. The time spent has been three years. The plans as presented, Howard has given a great suggestion to go back and say, "Hey, is this a possibility?" We can't expect for him to give a response to something that has not been researched and hasn't been thought about. None of the other plans have the 8:30 start time and a, and a 7:55 start time for the middle school. John brought up another great point. Today, we're willing to compromise, but only at the expense of certain groups. And so we're willing to compromise, but not for the green plan to have a possibility of having an 8:30 for both, the middle school and the high school. But we're not willing to compromise when it comes to the high school. And so I'm just, just reflect back and think about everything that we're all saying and just hear ourselves. And so it's like, we're only willing to compromise in certain areas, and is that right?
But, Michelle, with all due respect, I didn't say that. So I'm taking offense to you in words that I'm not.
I, I said, we are all. I did not say.
But not all. But we're not all. Some, some of us.
Some of us are. You're, you're right.
Some of us are not.
Some of us are not. But every plan on here compromises something for someone.
Lisa, are all your questions answered? Seva?
I'm done, Seva. You can.
No, because I asked, Pat was in the middle of answering a question of mine, and then he was cut off. So I'd like to hear his answer.
Um, if I could.
He, he was not, I did not cut anyone off. I rose my hand and I was actually called on by Paul.
All right, well, I didn't hear the rest of his answer then. What was it?
He never, he never, you, you actually interrupted him. And then I, my hand was up, and then Paul called on me.
All right, well, excuse me if I did. I apologize. Pat, uh, I, could you please answer the question or can I, or should I repeat it?
Seva, can you?
Okay. Let me speak up here, Lisa. There were five options presented, and your question was, how do we end up with a green plan? Well, I believe, I'm just going from memory here, but the first one was the base, the, the current plan. I mean, it was change nothing, if I recall, was the first option. The second option was like a 10-minute change or something, which wasn't worth the effort. So really, those two were essentially not worth considering. It was status quo or a 10-minute change, which wouldn't have meant anything. So there were three plans left, the green, the blue, and the gold. And Michelle, John, and I debated those and felt that green was a reasonable compromise. Around the same time, there was a letter that arrived in our inboxes that Pat had to go research, and from a teachers' union standpoint, the green plan made the most sense. So between those two factors, I think the green plan ended up as the preferred choice. If I could speak to that, and then I'll turn it over to Pat.
Can I add? Can I piggyback? And we also had input from learning services that said they did not prefer the blue plan. That, that was, that also happened at that meeting.
Pat, please.
Okay. So, yes, but the, the letter that you're referencing, Seva, came before the meeting, and at that time, Superintendent Watson and I have already talked about it. It, it's not an issue for collective bargaining. We've spoken to the attorney, and he, he said so. It's not in the contract. The contract does not provide for shift in time. We are, uh, maybe he can, maybe it's, I, I don't know at what point you need to see that, but I asked for the opinion from the attorney, and it was sent to me. I even asked for the cases cited, so I could check them, and I did. It is not an issue.
I think the, well, the letter was, regardless of collective bargaining, is that the union also prefers the green plan if they had to choose over the five plans. And that I'm sure went into the consideration for Superintendent Watson.
The letter said they prefer no change.
Superintendent Watson, do you want to continue with the answer to Lisa?
Sure. So keep in mind, I serve at the discretion of the board. So if tonight, no decision, it's still a decision. So one of the things I did is I went back to my team, including building administrators, transportation, and all the areas that the cabinet team covers. I also called all the board members and then looked back through some of the different data points. Parent feedback, staff feedback, student feedback, transportation, traffic, American Academy of Pediatrics, and all those different things. And as a team, we decided the green plan was the best plan to move forward with. Not that it was going to be the plan forever. And I appreciate everyone's passion, and this is a big deal. And there's no one good answer right now where everyone's going to walk away and say, "Yes, this is great. You move one, you move one group, great, we're happy. You move a different group, great, we're happy." But we were looking at, how can we make progress and move closer to the target with all the different factors involved? And that's why we selected the green plan. And if it gets voted down, that's okay. Regardless of the vote tonight, there's still more work to do.
All right, getting back. Any more questions?
So let's just make sure. Lisa, are you satisfied with that response from the superintendent?
Lisa, do you have any more questions?
Do I?
Yeah.
Sorry. Paul, again, can you please talk closer to the microphone, because I can't hear you?
Lisa, do you have any more questions?
No, I do not.
Jonathan?
I have one question for all the board members. Superintendent Watson just said that he called all of us to discuss the plan. Did, did we all receive a call from Superintendent Watson after the last meeting? Did anyone not, I suppose, is my question? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We've done this.
What, we're on the?
Your motion about additional, additional discussions will happen after we implement the green plan. That's on the, that's the motion.
We're currently debating, on the table is the amendment to the motion.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. We have a second.
Well, and the amendment is, as I currently stated, but if someone wants to amend the amendment to make it more of a requirement instead of an investigation, that certainly is a possibility.
And would I do that right now?
You would do that right now.
Okay. I, I motion to.
Wait, wait, wait. We're amending the amended, the already amended amendment?
All right. Here, here's the way this works. You have the base motion. I put an amendment.
It's already been amended twice.
You, you can, there's no problem. Per Roberts rules, you can amend an amendment, but you can't go any further amending an amendment. You can't go three tiers, but you can go two. So I currently have an amendment which talks about investigating, 2324. Jennifer is considering doing an amendment to take out the word investigating and to say that the.
No, Lisa amended your amendment already. So we're already at the second level.
No, Lisa did not amend it. What Lisa's proposed was tabling or deferring the conversation. That never got a second. So therefore, we're still having the discussion. If Lisa got a second, then we would be talking not about the amendment, we would talk about postponing this for a few weeks. But that never got a second. So that died. So, right now, it says investigate. Is that what we want to vote on, or do we want to try to go more strict?
I would move to change the word investigate to will implement.
Okay.
Okay, we have an amendment of will implement?
I sent in Jennifer's amended, amended.
Okay.
Amended, amended, amendment to the amendment to the amended.
No, 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 it's only amendment to the amendment. Let's not make it more confusing.
We have, it already is. Do we have discussion on the amendment?
Okay.
I am good with it.
All right.
Can you, can you restate?
Can we discuss Jennifer's amended amendment?
The, the amendment.
Can you restate the amendment to all on top of the?
I will, I will restate the amended amendment as it currently sits. The board further asked the superintendent to implement moving to a high school start time of 8:30 in 2324 school year without moving any other cohort to the 7:30 tier.
Say, no, no earlier than 8:30, just to give the flexibility.
So moving to the high school to, to no early, I said to a start time of 8:30. You want to give more flex?
No earlier than 8:30.
No early? Okay.
All right. I have a question for Superintendent Watson. Is that feasible, that amendment? To, to, I look at it as a guarantee that you have to do that when we say implement.
Trusty Baron, can you repeat that?
Sure. All right. As with a friendly amendment that I just got related to the earlier then. All right. The board further asks the superintendent to implement moving to a high school start, to a high school start time no earlier than 8:30 in the 2324 school year without moving any other cohort to the 8:30 tier.
With the green.
Without having all the data available, that makes it difficult. Might I suggest the plan presented has the high school at 8:30?
Currently, the plan, the green plan has the high school at 7:55.
I'm talking about the amendment you're proposing.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah?
Only because you're asking me to lock in two tiers guaranteed while I feel that we're going to be able to do it. I don't have all the data right in front of me.
When do you, so trying to figure this out, trying to figure out this Gordian knot here. When do you think you would have enough information to be able to make that kind of, I'm going to say guarantee, but, but decision?
So let me make sure I understand the question. When can I come forward with a proposal?
Yeah.
About whether or not we can have our two tiers, which you hear everyone saying is the goal, with 8:30 high school, 8:30 middle school, and 910?
When do you think would be reasonable for us to ask for that back from you?
Fall of 2022. That way, we'll know for sure, or not for sure, we'll know what our enrollment looks like at that point.
Okay.
We'll know what transportation looks like at that point. For example, to go to the two tiers, we're going to need the high school, ninth and 10th graders who don't typically register to ride the bus, to register to make sure we can balance everything out. Whether we need maybe a couple buses, a couple additional drivers.
Okay.
I feel comfortable in the fall of 2022.
So in a year and a half from now?
Correct.
So would.
To be implemented in the fall of 2023.
Can I, can I just point out that the amendment as written doesn't say we're guaranteeing a two-tier bus system. It says we are guaranteeing high school no earlier than 8:30 without putting somebody else at 7:30.
That guarantees two tiers where you're going 8:30, 910, 950.
Well, strictly.
It says, it says the superintendent to implement, so it sort of is a guarantee.
Well, strictly speaking, it doesn't prevent moving up elementary school. It, it, as long as it's not before 7:30.
Okay.
That's my point. That's why I want, Jennifer, that's why I can't approve it, because I agree with Paul. I don't know that he can do that without having the freedom to maybe say, somebody starts before seven, 7:30. I don't think we can put parameters.
Well, when I.
You know, I, I think we have to give him room to make this work. And so, you know, asking him for a certainty, we, we put too many conditions on the certainty. If we want to say high school by 8:30 and middle, because to me adolescent is, what, 11 and up, 10 and up, whatever they define it as, the CDC defines it as, if we're saying those two groups follow CDC recommendations, I, I think he needs freedom to be able to work with, you know, too many pieces that don't move give him zero flexibility. I don't know if it's possible.
So let me just ask Jennifer.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
So I, I still don't understand what is wrong with Howard, your, your original amendment, which is the green plan creeping toward, probably not, not the best, you know, overall, long-term, and having discussions to try, without a guarantee, to try to figure out how we can get there. What is wrong with that?
That's, my original amendment says to investigate, but it doesn't have a timeframe. So we could put in here, by the fall of, by September of 2022, comma, blah, 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 blah. And we could, you know, add that, and that puts a time certain to get him to come back. But it does leave the word investigate instead of implement. Again, what we can do is try, look, we can, we can put the word implement in and take a vote. And if it passes, if it gets four votes, then it's implement. And if it doesn't, then we fall back to the investigate. But we got to find out where we are.
So you're, you're making that amendment?
So I'm, I'm making the, the will implement amendment, and then.
And Lisa seconded.
Did you second it?
No, Lisa seconded.
Lisa seconded, right, Lisa? All right. All right. So now, we've had discussion.
Right.
Let's vote on it. Siva?
For Jennifer's proposal.
The, the implement word.
I say yes.
Yes.
Was there a timeframe?
I can, here, let me add, I didn't have it, but let's add that.
All right, you can read it.
By.
I just want to make sure I know what I'm saying, yes or no.
By, I'll put at the end, the superintendent will report back by, the superintendent will report back.
Sorry, I have another question.
That's fine. This is new. Board by September 2023. Okay.
So.
Wait, I didn't say will report back.
Can you read it, Howard?
I said, I said will implement.
No, will implement. I have added, in addition to that, that will report back in terms of how to actually do that.
Oh, okay.
So Siva's a yes?
And this is implementation for 2023?
Yes.
Yeah.
Implementation, September 2023.
When, when the middle schools are opening.
Howard, could I ask?
The original motion said that no other cohorts would be moved. Is that correct?
Correct.
Or is that not?
Correct. That no, no cohort will be in the, I said 7:30, it's more of maybe the 7 o'clock tier, which is any time between 7:01 and 7:59.
So, so we're voting that he, him.
Well, I think we have to send discussion on it.
All right.
Because I don't, I'm not clear what's happening in the year 2022, 23.
All right. So, so let's have discussion. So Pat and his team have to implement, have to implement in 2023 an 8:30 start time per this, per the board.
That's the.
So, so I personally am not comfortable with using the word implement, because that ties his hand without any research being done on what he needs to do. So, but we can, you know, that, that's.
We're in the, we're in the, we're in a roll call.
Well.
So are you a yes or no?
Yeah, I'm not real comfortable, because this still could move elementary schools, I think you said to seven, seven, seven o'clock?
No, it's a, the, the tier concept is you got the seven to, 701 to 759 tier, the 801 to the 859 tier, and then the 901 to the 910, or the 955, 59 tier. I mean, we're not trying to get it down to the exact minute. But basically, no one wants to be, you know, getting their kids starting school sometime during, when the, when the clock says seven.
But the question, question I do have is, so let's say this, you know, the green plan is eight, 755, 830, 910, and we're moving, we're saying implement, so it has to be done, high school to 830. What does that do to the other two? Nothing?
That's the idea.
Saying, get it to 830 somehow, without him doing any research right now, figure it out with, without moving the other two.
By saying implement, we're giving him an eating.
We say, figure it out.
No, that's not what that says, Paul. Paul, that's not what that said. It didn't say that they can't move the other two.
Is that what we're saying?
It doesn't say we can't move the other two. It just says we can't make anybody go as early as 7:30.
But, I mean, come on, the, the concept here, guys, I mean, we're not going to make this into a sign.
The gold standard would be to have two tiers of busing, but we're not promising. We're not locking into that.
The concept is, we are not going to try to get anyone to go backwards. We want everyone to go forwards in terms of time.
Okay. Well, anyway, in terms of discussion, we're still in discussion. I don't like the word guarantee.
Okay.
But we're at, we're at roll call. Lisa, do you have any more discussion? I mean, we're in.
Yeah, I, I still haven't gotten the answer to my question. We have a recommendation that we've amended, I don't know how many times, that called for a start time for next year, 2021, 22. What is happening in 2022, 23?
Nothing.
Nothing. It would be the same schedule for the next two years.
So, so you're, you're asking for approval of the green plan for two years, and then at the end of two years, you will implement a start time of 8:30 for elementary and middle without changing, without anyone starting at 7:30?
Not, not for elementary. For middle and high, it's 8:30. And elementary, hope would be staying the same place at 910.
But it could move.
All right. So.
We have to get the superintendent to tell us that, but excuse me.
How do you get from one year to two with this plan, though, is what I guess I don't understand.
Because we can't, we can't make another sea change until we have two middle schools, because it changes the populations on the buses when we're at 68 instead of 48. You know what I mean?
Okay, I understand that. But why wasn't the original ask then for two years?
Well.
The original ask is for perpetuity.
Right.
Yeah.
When we do it to.
The original ask on the amendment, I'm sorry, the original recommendation was only for one year. If we're timing this around, you know, building reconfigurations and all that, why wasn't the original recommendation from the superintendent for two years?
My understanding, and again.
Did you see something that says one year? I didn't see anything that said.
Yeah.
It says start.
Approval of start times, 2021 through, and that's the way it's worded on our agenda.
I, I think.
It doesn't say that it's for two, it didn't, it did not say that we will revisit in one year.
Yeah, I think, I think the.
We're only asked to change it in one.
Well, I think, I think the intention, I think the intention was to say start times beginning in the 21, 22 school year.
Lisa is, is correct. Lisa's correct in the way it's worded. But the understanding was, instead of for the 2021, 22, it should be starting with the 2021, 20. That was the understanding.
All right. That was not my understanding, because in my phone call that Siva earlier referenced, I was under the impression of the entire phone call that it was only a year.
Yeah.
In fact, I said, is it wise to keep changing times? This is upsetting to parents when we keep changing times around.
Once we get through this amendment thing, process, we can go back and amend the, we can say starting with. That's a perfectly, I, I think that's what we all assumed, instead of.
I didn't.
Okay. We, we'll get to that. Let's get this amendment out of the way, and we'll go to that one.
So we'll go back to a vote. Are we okay? Is everyone, are we done with discussion? We can vote on this amendment? We'll go back. Siva?
So amendment, amendment on implement.
The vote is on using.
Will implement.
Will implement.
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
I'm still a no, but it's, it's a good option. Not for me. No.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard?
Because the superintendent said he didn't want to do it. No. Or not, didn't, didn't want to commit to it at this point, the answer, that my vote is no.
No. I'm a no. Motion fails.
Okay.
So we will go back to your original amendment.
Correct.
Which is discussion.
Which is investigate.
Investigate.
Okay.
So we have that. We have a second. We've had discussion.
Do, any more discussion?
Any more discussion? Okay. Siva?
Yes.
Jennifer?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Howard?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion passes.
Okay. Now, we're back to the original motion. Let me make this amendment to change the word, let's see. I moved, so the amended, the amendment I want to do is, I move the Board of Education, approve the following start times, starting, so instead of for the, change those words to starting in 2021, 2022 school year with the amendment we just added.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Second. Discussion? Siva?
No discussion. I, yes.
Yes. Jennifer?
No.
Are you asking me to vote or no discussion?
No, we just, we're asking to vote, to, you know, just change it so it's clearer that it's in perpetuity. It's in perpetuity, so it's not just one year.
I, I was, I'm okay with no discussion.
Let me just, let me just explain the amendment real quick. The whole idea is to eliminate the ambiguity of what happens in 22, 23.
Oh.
I, I wanted to make sure.
That's, that's all we're trying to do, is clarify that 22, 23 is not kind of up in the.
You could go back.
That's correct. And I, I still say yes.
I lost track.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I, I am a yes on the word starting.
You're on mute, John.
You're on mute. John, you're, Jonathan, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I am a yes. And I also zoned out. And again, I zoned out twice, apparently.
Lisa? Lisa?
All right. I just want to be clear. We're voting on the word change from the, starting in or beginning in.
Right. Instead of for the, it changes to starting or beginning or starting in the.
All right. So I'm going to be a no, because I would rather just be for one year.
Okay. Howard?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion passes.
Okay.
Okay.
So now we're on the base, now we're on the amended, amended, the amended proposal. We've got one more vote.
Yes. Now on the amendment itself.
No, no, on the proposal itself as amended.
Yes.
Or the motion as amended.
Okay. Siva?
Yes.
I, can we read it?
Want to read it, Howard?
If I can read my scribbles, yes.
Come on, Howard. You can do it. It's only 11:40. If it was midnight, it's.
Quiet. All right. I move the Board of Education, approve the following start times, starting in the 2021, 22 school year. 755 high school, 830 middle school, 910 elementary school. The board further asks the superintendent to investigate moving to a high school, a high school start time no earlier than 8:30 a.m. in the 22, 23 school year without moving any other cohort to the 7 o'clock tier. The, the superintendent will report back to the school board by September 2023.
I think there was a misread there. Did you mean the 23?
I'm sorry, wait, wait. No, no, September 22. The superintendent will report back to the school board by September 22. My bad.
Are you okay, Jonathan?
I'm sorry, John.
You wanted to read one more time?
Can you just read that one more time?
Read it one more time.
All right, all right. I wrote it down.
We'll get there. We'll get there.
So I'm not going to read the base amendment or the base proposal anymore. I'll just read the amendment. Is that okay?
Yep.
Sure.
The board further asks the superintendent to investigate moving to a high school start time no earlier than 8:30 a.m. in the 23, 24 school year without moving any other cohort to the 7 o'clock tier. The superintendent will report back to the school board by September, no later, let me say no later, no later than September 2022.
Siva?
I'm a yes.
Jennifer?
I'm a no. And I just want to say, Superintendent Watson, as, as we talked this week, it is never feels good, nor ever my intention not to support a recommendation. But for all the reasons I've, I've talked about, I just, I can't.
I've I've talked about, I just, I can't go for a plan that doesn't push the high school to 8:30. But I also know that you are very much working towards that goal, and I appreciate that.
And just so you know, I completely respect your decision.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks, Superintendent Watson. Michelle?
You're up, Michelle.
Are you talking, Paul?
Yeah, Michelle, yeah, sorry, Michelle, yes, yeah, for you the vote.
Uh, yes.
Jonathan?
I'm a yes, too, and I also feel comfortable knowing that Pat is working towards the end goal. So for what it's worth, I, I think we'll get there.
Lisa?
No.
Howard?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion passes. You would think we're done with the board meeting, but we have, we're on D. And I'm sorry, we're on C. That's as, can we get a motion, Howard?
Yeah, I hope we can.
Howard wants to make a motion.
Howard wants to make the motion.
I'd like to make the motion, and hopefully, this can be quick. If this is going to take a lot of discussion, we can defer it, but if it's really simple, I think we should do it. Okay, I move the Board of Education, adopt the Michigan Association of School Boards' Governance Standards Resolution as presented, but I'd like to present it. So let's look for a second first.
Second, do we have to talk about this for a long time?
No, all I would like to do, just for the record, I'd like to just read the motion really quick so everyone, as presented, so we can just understand it. So Board Resolution of Adoption of the MASB Governance Standards, Board of Education Governance Standards. Whereas 30 years of research on school district leadership has proven correlation exists between school board, work of school boards and student achievement, whereas school boards in high achieving districts exhibit characteristics and practices that differ greatly from those in lower achieving school districts regardless of socioeconomic status, and whereas the Board of Education of Bloomfield Hills Schools is committed to governing the district in a manner that creates high achievement and positive outcomes for students, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education Bloomfield Hills adopts the Board of Education Governance Standards published by the Michigan Association of School Boards, and in doing so, the Board of Education Bloomfield Hills commits to conducting itself in a manner consistent with the Board of Education Governance Standards, and individual members of this Bloomfield Hills Board of Education commit to conducting him or herself in a manner consistent with the individual member standards, and the Board of Education of Bloomfield Hills shall ensure the Board of Education governance are visible at every board meeting, and the Board of Education of Bloomfield Hills shall visit and revisit the Board of Education Governance Standards regularly to ensure their continuing influence on their board work, and the Board of Education Bloomfield Hills Schools shall hold itself accountable to these standards. Individual and the individual members of the Bloomfield Hills School Boards shall address behaviors that are not aligned with governance standards adopted on such and such a date.
Okay, we have the motion, we have support?
Support.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Good.
I just want to say thank you for looking in my direction when you said all those things.
I don't think that was purposeful.
You know, we've all, we've all read these, it's lovely, and it is aligned with everything we've been working on with Michelle, Dr. Harmala, and and so on and so forth. And so I'm very happy that we have this reference to with our BOP, with our policy, with our code of conduct and code of ethics. This is another very practical tool, two pages long, to strengthen our our ability to to lead the organization effectively.
And the reason I wanted to read it is, as you can see, it does commit us to a lot of different things, number one. And also, if we do approve this, I would ask that we also request the superintendent to talk to our communications person about seeing, one, what can we do to sort of make this very visible to us in the school board here in this room, and also potentially promote it to MASB, to our community, that this is the way we are going to run our district, both the way we're going to individually conduct ourselves at meetings and offsite, and also this is the way we're going to govern ourselves around the table as a team of eight. That's really important.
We don't have to recommend it to MASB because they wrote it.
No, what I'm saying is they they MASB, MASB has a list of which districts have adopted this on their.
I'm sorry, I'm teasing you because it's late.
It's very late. Siva?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Thank you again, Howard, my vote is a yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard? Yes.
A yes, motion passes, 70.
And again, final thing on that is so many of these things, whether strategic plans or governance standards, are very easy to approve, and then it goes on a shelf, and it doesn't get looked at. We need to make this a living document that we really internalize. Thank you.
Dee, we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to reconfirm the Bloomfield Hills Schools' Extended Continuity of Learning Plan as mandated monthly by the Senate Return to Learn Bill Package and Updated to Include the Requirements of Public Act III that adheres to the 20-hour-per-week requirement as presented by the administration.
Siva supports.
Second.
Hey, Michelle? Siva?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle? I think that was a yes. She was on mute. That's a yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard? Yes.
Yes, motion passes, and then is it finally E? That's it? One more?
Come on, we got to go, I only have 5% of my iPad.
And we have eight minutes till midnight, so let's go.
Why did you do the first, like, 35 years of your life without a device?
All right, I, E, Board Business, I move the Board of Education reschedule the May 13, 2021 study session, which conflicts with the district's observation of Eid al-Fitr to May 20, 2021 at 6:00 p.m.
Support.
Any discussion? The only thing I will comment is, is, you know, this is the work of students to get this changed, to have Eid a holiday, so I just wanted to recognize those students. Probably none of them are up at this point, but if but if they do watch the tape, you know, this is because of their efforts to get that changed. Siva?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Definitely, yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion passes.
Do we also have no school scheduled?
No school, well, yeah.
On Eid?
Yes, it's a day off.
It's a day off. Wonderful.
It's a day off.
I had to think for a second.
No, no, it's, well, it's 11:54, we've been here since 5, but.
I want to make a snide comment, if we had 8:30 start time, they wouldn't have to be at then by now.
Okay, okay.
All right, we're going to try to meet the midnight deadline. One more to go.
Yep.
I just have to say, I, I hope, it's really evident who's got high school kids and who doesn't because, A, they're not sleeping, and B, it doesn't matter if they start at 8:30 or not, they're not sleeping.
Okay, I'm moving on.
Anyway, F? F?
I move the Board of Education approve the schedule of 202122 board meetings as presented.
Second.
Second, Siva?
I approve, yes.
Jennifer?
Yes, just to say if those are the same original dates Rebecca sent, I may miss one or two early in the cycle this summer. But yeah, I gave her that feedback, so.
We can, we can modify some things.
Well, anyway, it's fine, I'm a yes.
She wants to delay so we get past midnight. Michelle?
Never.
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
I'm a yes, call for adjournment.
Adjournment.
Thank you, everyone.